Gail Towers. For case.
It should be there. Let me double check and be right with you, everybody.
It's live now.
Gail Towers.
It should be here.
Isles. Three files, one is the draft.
Yes.
Everyone hear me? It's live now.
Yes, thank you.
Here's Higgins, here's Towers.
Alright, I have it. Okay, ready?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start with docket number 2020 DM O E B dash zero five. Okay, please take notice that the municipal officers electoral board for the village of Dalton put a hearing and a passing upon objections to the nomination papers of Charles Higgins. Candidate for the village trust trustee will hold a meeting today, which is required by law to meet and pass upon objections nomination papers of candidates in the village of Dalton to be voted for at the consolidated primary election to be held on February 23, 2021. The board shall convene Monday, which is today, at 12:30. Let the record reflect what time it is, Madam Clerk.
12:39.
It's 12:39 in the village hall of Village Dalton at 14122 King Drive via remote Zoom conference. For the purpose of hearing and passing upon objections to the nomination papers of Charles Higgins, candidate for the village trustee for February 23, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you take your role?
Chairman Rogers?
I'm here.
Clerk Dugan here, Trustee Henry.
Present.
All members of the board are here.
Yes.
And attorneys, so attorneys are present.
Justice Giannopoulos, present and appearing on behalf of the respondent candidate, Charles Higgins.
And Tiffany Nelson Jaworski, appearing on behalf of the objector, Kiana L. Belcher.
And Ms. Samuels?
Amber Samuelson, on behalf of the electoral board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any public comment? Giovanni?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'd like to call docket number 2020 DM O E B dash zero five, docket Belcher versus Higgins. Proceedings on the motion to disqualify. Ruling on the motion to disqualify, adoption of rules of procedure, further proceedings, if any, on motions, objections, and/or arguments, and then a recess to another date to specify.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
If I may interject, I would suggest passing the rules of procedure prior to the hearing on the motion to disqualify, just because that, under the law, we should have done that the first day, so.
Is any objections to that?
No objection.
No objection on behalf of the candidate.
Okay, do we need to actually read the rules of procedure?
Um, I can give a, as I did in the previous hearings, I can give a brief overview, and then you would call for a motion to pass them.
Okay.
Okay, would you like me to do so?
I have no objection to that. There's any objections from anyone else?
No.
No objection.
No objection.
Um, as I said in the previous hearings, the rules of procedure are the standard rules which were adopted by Cook County and the city of Chicago. These are the same rules that have been used previously in electoral board hearings. The one difference is that due to the pandemic, section 2A was added to deal with the issue of remote hearings, et cetera. Other than that, the rules are the standard rules. And I believe everybody has, at this point, received a copy.
I have.
Candidate has a copy.
Copy acknowledged. Tiffany Nelson Jaworski, on behalf of the objector.
Okay. As stated and explained at the prior hearing in this matter, I am Riley Rogers, the chairperson of the electoral board, also serving on electoral board, is village clerk Mary Kay Dugan and senior trustee Tiffany Henry. These members are provided by the Illinois Election Code, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates nomination papers. And we have a quorum. Okay.
We need a motion on the adoption of the rules of procedure.
That is right. Okay, can I get a motion on adoption of rules?
So moved.
I'll second that.
On the motion, Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Dugan, trustee Dugan. Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Henry?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Where do we start?
Um, the thing, the next thing is to just give a recap of the case status and filings. If you.
Okay, a recap of the case status and filings. Initial hearing was held on December 15, 2020. Case management order was issued subsequent to there, too. Second objective filed a motion to disqualify on December 16, 2020. The candidate filed a response to the motion to disqualify on December 18, 2020. The objective filed a motion for subpoena on December 16, 2020. The candidate filed an objection to the objector's request for subpoena on December 17, 2020. The objective filed a response to the objection on December 18, 2020. In proceeding on to the motion to disqualify, oral arguments are on a motion. Objector going to argue first?
Yes, I'm ready to argue. I just, are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, board members. We are here today in response or for a ruling on my, my client's request to disqualify certain board members from the electoral board. The, the objector recognizes, of course, that the Illinois Election Code provides that, under statute, there are certain members of the electoral board that are, again, statutory members of the electoral board. Generally, for municipality, those are the mayor, the clerk, and the longest sitting alderman or trustee. If one of those is running for the office for which objections is sought, that person is disqualified by statute and then replaced with the second longest sitting trustee or alderman to move into their place. If that person is unavailable or unable to serve for some reason, then it goes to a public member. As we sit here today, we do not have a situation where there is, per se, statutory disqualification as it relates to somebody running for that same office. Instead, what we have today is a different type of disqualification that is sought. And this is a disqualification based upon a conflict of interest. The case law has been fairly clear that while you cannot remove somebody from an electoral board just for political bias alone, you can remove them from an electoral board, and they in fact should be removed from an electoral board if there is a pecuniary interest. And if they have a pecuniary interest in the outcome of the case. And in addition to that, where they may be called to potentially testify in a case. That's the Girat v. Keith case. So in this case right here, what we have here, we do not have a Girat v. Keith fact pattern, which is, that was a situation in which the clerk was going to be called to testify as to something related to the filing. So we don't have that here. What we have here instead is we have a pecuniary interest. Filed with our, our response, I'm sorry, filed with our motion for disqualification, we filed an exhibit, two exhibits, actually. The first exhibit is a screenshot of a campaign poster, I believe it is, or a campaign billboard that states, "Paid for funds," or "Paid for Riley's friends." When you look up Riley's Friends on the Illinois State Board of Elections website, it's linked to Riley Rogers, the current sitting mayor and candidate for mayor of the village of Dalton. Also, when you look at the exhibit that was submitted as Exhibit A, you see on that exhibit that Riley Rogers appears on this campaign flyer, also with Gail Towers and Charles Higgins. Again, we understand that political affiliation alone is not enough to disqualify somebody from serving as an electoral board member. However, this is more than political affiliation. These flyers cost money. These campaign posters cost money. These billboards cost money. Clearly, we have a co-mingling of financial ties, and there is pecuniary interest that, that member Rogers and member Dugan both have in relation to keeping these two individuals. In this specific case, we're talking about Charles Higgins. But in the next case, where we have the exact same issue, I'll be likely adopting the exact same arguments. So for the sake of judicial economy, I'll make the majority of my arguments here. The, these two candidates clearly, or I'm sorry, these two board members, specifically member Dugan and member Rogers, clearly have a pecuniary interest in making sure that Gail Towers and Charles Higgins stay on the ballot. They have, in fact, Riley, Riley's Friends is supporting all of these candidates. So there's that. And again, that is tied to Mr. Riley Rogers, the current candidate for mayor and the chairman of this board. And in addition to that, I mean, it's clear that they are all running together. Again, this is more than just political affiliation, though. This has to do with a financial interest. They're quite obviously fundraising together. They're going out there, collecting signatures together. And they're going out there and putting up billboards together. And obviously Riley's Friends is paying for billboards to advertise this slate of candidates. So there is a pecuniary interest, and therefore, it is our opinion that neither member Dugan nor member Rogers, because of this pecuniary interest, would be able to be an impartial judge, and we are asking for their removal from the electoral board and replacement with either the next available trustee, in accordance with the statute, or a public, or public members. Thank you.
The board wish me to proceed on behalf of the candidate?
Yes.
Okay. Good, good afternoon, members of the board. The, the issue that's before the board is on the objector's motion or petition to disqualify. And there's a, an allegation of co-mingling, things of that nature. However, there's nothing in the record whatsoever to establish that argument. There's no facts on that which is pred, which is predicated. What you have is attached to the objector's motion to disqualify is you have, you have a classic example of a political alliance. There appears to be a billboard shown, "Keep Dalton moving forward, vote Democrat, February 23rd," and it lists five individuals who have formed a political alliance seeking to be elected, nominated at the February 23rd primary election. That snapshot of that billboard appears on a Facebook page of Riley Rogers. And that's what, that's the, the record before the board, supporting their contention that disqualification is appropriate. There's been no reference to the Illinois appellate court decision of Ryan versus Landak, an appellate court case which squarely addressed the issue. That's a 159, elapsed third at 10. And before the, the board, before the, the court and the Ryan versus Landak case was essentially what this board has before it, and that is a political alliance which is alleged to merit disqualification. The Illinois appellate court recognized in Landak, and I'll quote the language, referring to a case called Cook. Cook is analogous to the instant case. Similar to Cook, Ryan alleges he cannot receive a fair hearing because of political bias. Even if we assume these allegations to be true, we agree with Cook that the election code does not provide for substitution when an objector alleges political bias. Goes on to state that the legislature has set up a stable mechanism for addressing pre-election grievances. The statutory provisions allowing substitution under particular circumstances and judicial review adequately ensure an objector a fair hearing. It is not the province of the courts to inject provisions not found in the statute. Section 10-9 of the election code contains the provision which allows for statutory disqualification. Counsel for the objector correctly states that there is, that that has been found to include other situations such as in Girat, where a clerk might be, be testifying in the matter, then there's a requirement for disqualification. What we have before the board here is an allegation of co-mingling. Yet, you'll notice that there was no argument whatsoever that indicated the source of payment, the collection of a joint war chest. I believe there was a characterization that it was quite obvious, and I believe it's nothing further from the truth. The only matters before this board is a, is a picture of a billboard with five individuals forming a political alliance. And at the bottom of the billboard, I believe, but the, my Rs aren't what they used to be, but I believe it's Friends of Riley Rogers. That's a classic case of political affiliation, a political piece, albeit a big one, a billboard, but a political piece listing the, the candidates in which there is an alliance at hand. And, and nothing more than that. And petitioners are in the objector's objection, a motion to disqualify, there's cited, apparently it's been abandoned at the present time, but there's a reference to the Ochoa case, which was a circuit court decision, circuit court order addressing a disqualification. And as noted in, in the candidate's response to the motion to disqualify, there are compelling facts put forward in the Ochoa decision, where the circuit court made specific factual findings that included that all three running for reelection jointly contribute and raise campaign funds and financing in a group known as the Cicero Voters Alliance. Here, there's been no, no suggestion, no evidence certainly put forward of the, of the three running jointly contributing to the campaign piece, raising campaign funds. There's allegations, there's assertions, but it's not supported factually by any information whatsoever. Again, it's a raising of a political alliance in an attempt to bootstrap the disqualification on some means other than political alliance. Ryan versus Landak teaches that political alliance is not a basis for this board member to disqualify itself. There are other facts set forth in the Ochoa case that were spelled out, that were solicited, and there were factual findings made by the court warranting disqualification. I'd like the, the board to take note. This issue is in one of first impression. There's general order 21 in the circuit court of Cook County. These are orders put out regulating court proceedings, and there's one rule, general order 21, that specifically addresses electoral boards and contains a specific provision to address the, the matter before the board. And it does provide, Rule 5B, that members of an electoral board must be disqualified on due process grounds if they have a personal or direct pecuniary interest in the outcome of a case, or if one of the members would properly be called as a necessary witness in a, in a, in a case, and therefore required to judge his or her own testimony. However, electoral board members do not have a disqualifying interest because they may be political allies or opponents of a party in a case, or merely because they're familiar with facts of a case. Neither may a statutory member cause a vacancy to be filled by this general order by a personal preference or convenience of that statutory member not to sit, or merely because a party has requested such disqualification. That's where we're at, I submit to the board. A party has requested disqualification, not on a statutory basis, with, with no facts sufficient to come anywhere near the compelling facts of Ochoa, but merely has made an assertion of campaign contributions with nothing whatsoever in the record to support it. I submit to the members of the board that the objector has failed to state a sufficient basis that not only would allow or require the board members to recuse themselves, but pursuant to Rule 5, Section 5B of General Order 21, I, I submit that the statutory member cannot sit merely because a party has requested the disqualification. So the mere request before this board with nothing more other than a request is not a sufficient basis for this board or the individual board members to shirk their statutory responsibilities. Thank you.
And may I have a couple minutes for reply?
Certainly.
Thank you. Just in reply, the objector has not abandoned the Ochoa arguments, and they were basically stated in a summary fashion so as to not belabor the point by stating that there is, in fact, a direct and, direct personal and/or pecuniary, I'm sorry, personal or direct pecuniary interest. In the Ochoa case, which interestingly, I was one of the public members that was appointed after the judge determined that public members were needed. In the Ochoa case, there were financial ties between the parties. The financial ties were certainly clear. Here, in my opinion, the financial ties are also certainly clear. We've got a billboard paid for by Friends of Riley Rogers, and that billboard is advertising candidates that are both on the electoral board as well as are being objected to. There is, this is more than just mere political alliance. A political alliance is, you know, a meeting of the minds, possibly formal agreements that you are going to act in a certain manner. Formal agreements that, you know, you're going to maybe come to somebody's campaign event. Putting somebody on a flyer, especially on a billboard, which we all know costs a pretty good amount of money, putting somebody on a billboard saying that you are supporting them with your name on there, with the statement of Friends, paid for by Friends of Riley's Friends, going that far takes it, takes it outside of the realm of just a mere political alliance and mere political ties. We can see that, that you cannot just remove somebody from an electoral board based upon mere political ties. And this is certainly the first step in our, our request, and, you know, we may have to go before the circuit court to get this, this heard. So we are requesting that the board members at issue be disqualified because they do, in fact, have a pecuniary interest in the outcome of this case. Their running mates, which were all paid for by Friends of, you know, where their political literature has all been paid for by Friends, by Riley's Friends, their political fate is tied to this case. And as such, because there is this pecuniary interest, this expenditure of money, that's what makes us different. In Ryan versus Landak, there was not the, the fact pattern that we have here. There was not the expenditure of funds. In some of the other cases cited, there was not the expenditure of funds. Here, we have the expenditure of funds. That's where the differentiation lies. And with that, I ask for a ruling to disqualify the two board members at issue, and I also rest on the additional argument stated in my brief. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further rebuttal to that, Attorney Giannopoulos?
Nothing further. I'll stand on the argument and the submissions in my brief.
Okay. All right, Board Attorney?
I think first, you're supposed to have electoral board deliberations, if any.
Yeah, I mean, is there any response for any of the board members?
Um, yes, of course. Trustee Henry, um, my response is, I totally agree with Attorney Tiffany Nelson. I think that you two should accuse yourself and remove yourself from the board. I think you guys will be biased if you do sit on the board to hear the cases of Higgins and Towers, which are two trustees that's running with you and Clerk Dugan on this upcoming mayor race. I will pray that you guys would do that and not sit here. This is unbelievable that you guys can even judge yourselves for staying on the board. I don't want a repeat of 2017 when Andrew Holmes came in and you was his judge, juror, executor as well, mayor, along with Clerk Dugan, to remove him from the ballot. I don't want that to happen again, and the person stays on the ballot and have issues. So I'm praying that you guys would take heed to that and have some type of conscience and accuse yourself and remove yourself from this board and let a public member or the next trustee sit on the board. Thank you.
Or Member Dugan, do you have any response?
Only that I appreciate the distinction between having a political bias, which I think, if that was the disqualifier, all of the elected officials who are running for offices have clearly made their preferences known to candidates. Trustee Henry, by your own conduct, you accompany the objector to file her objections. So clearly, you share a preference as well for certain other candidates. So the issue comes to whether or not there's a financial pecuniary interest asserted that would disqualify us. And I have not heard one, and I'm not aware of one.
Okay, with that being said, I think it is. You guys are spending money together. And if you guys had a problem with me sitting on the board, you could have challenged that as well, but you guys did not. So here we are. So you guys must wanted me to stay here. Hold on, one second. You guys must wanted me to stay on the board because you didn't challenge it, because you could have easily removed me. And if you guys will remove yourself, I'm willing to remove, remove myself, too. That way, it will be fair. I have no issue with that. My issue is it being a fair ruling on the case. I don't want it to be biased, and you guys are not going to remove your candidate from this board. You're going to put them on the ballot like you guys did in 2017 with Andrew Holmes. So that's why I'm speaking again now, like I did last time, to remove yourselves from this electoral board so that the person will at least have a fair shot. So if you guys willing to, I am too. So what are we going to do?
My point was that if bias was the only issue, then the elected officials would be required to remove themselves from considering all of the objections for all of the candidates, because it applies in every single case. But the issue, as I understand it, presented by both counsel, is not who each of us supports or does not support, but whether or not there's a financial conflict of interest. And I have not heard one, and I am not aware of one.
Well, just like I thought. So you're not gonna, are you willing to remove yourself, Mary Kay?
From what I understand, absent a financial conflict of interest, I'm not permitted to.
So that means no. Okay, so Mayor, you staying on the board, too?
Trustee Henry, I'm not sure whether your prayers are going to be answered today, but I am not removing myself from the board. I am the electoral board chairperson, and, and I stand at that.
Okay, and that's fine. So I just made my points for the record on how I felt about it. For residents or anyone that's watching, we had the same issue in 2017 when Andrew Holmes ran for office, did not live in town. The mayor basically approved him to stay on the ballot. Mary Kay, Dugan, the clerk, approved him to stay on the ballot. Myself, Trustee Henry, voted no to take him off the ballot. So here we are with the same situation that we had in 2017. So I guess we will be moving forward. So I guess we will be moving forward and you guys will hear the case, but I want you guys to open your eyes, pay attention to what's going on in Dalton. Thank you.
I don't think of any validity, there's any validity to what happened in 2017 in regards to what's going on today. I asked that the village, uh, the electoral board attorney make a recommendation for the electoral board and we move forward to vote.
Okay, um. I think that there, the, having a political alliance isn't sufficient to. Qualify a certain board member for disqualification. That the objector would need to find some sort of. Financial ties between the parties, um, a pooling of finances, et cetera. And in my opinion, the objector has not made this, has not met this threshold. Thank you.
At this time, I think it would be appropriate for the electoral board to, to vote on the motion to disqualify.
We need the motion, Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Disqualify yourself?
Disqualify, uh, uh, myself as a board member, uh, in regards to this hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been a motion, it's been seconded.
Point of clarification on the second?
Go ahead.
I, I heard that the motion, as I understood it, was that you disqualify yourself. Is that correct?
It was.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Um. I don't know if that's the correct motion. Wouldn't it be a, uh, motion? On, um, objectors or a motion for a vote on objectors, objectors' motion to disqualify? Would be the correct language?
That's my understanding, the, 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 the motion is to either grant or deny. The objector's motion to disqualify.
Which it could also be granted or denied in part. So if the mayor, if, if Mayor Riley Rogers' intention is to. Disqualify himself and remove himself from the board. Then it would be a motion to. To accept the, to approve the motion or to grant the motion in part and deny the motion in part. So I guess I'm just a little confused what's going on.
I, I am as well.
Yes, I think the, the mayor, we need to clarify the language of your motion so that way it's clear for the record.
Okay. And I modified that based upon, um, what Madam Clerk had indicated. So, um, to make it very clear. I like to make a motion to remain. A electoral board member. Is that clear enough?
It, it was clear the first time, but go ahead.
Is this a motion on yourself, Mayor, or for both?
For both.
Okay, so it's a motion to deny. Objector's motion to disqualify.
Is that clear enough for everyone?
Yeah, well, Mayor, Clerk Dugan's statement of the motion, I, I believe expresses the intent of the board members through the discussion thus far.
So.
Ms. Nelson?
I'll try it one more time, just so I'm clear as well. Mayor Rogers, effectively, your motion is to deny. Objector's motion to disqualify yourself and myself.
Is that clear for everyone?
Remain on the board.
Yes, that's, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I do got it.
Okay, is there a second? There was a second then. Is that, is your second the same, uh, trustee Henry?
It is not, no, it's not.
Okay, so you're not seconding it?
No.
You're not gonna second? Okay. Madam Clerk, you want to second this?
No, I do not.
No, you do that?
No, I do not. I will.
Okay. For all clarification. So that this is clear. For the interpretation of the vote. You are going to second?
I second the motion to deny objector's motion to disqualify Riley Rogers and Mary Kay Dugan.
Is that clear enough for everyone?
It could be that we would remain on the electoral board.
That's clear.
Is that clear with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. There's a motion. And I'm not going to repeat it. This is clear to everyone. And there's a second on the floor. So why don't we take the vote?
Okay, one more time on the motion to deny objector's motion to disqualify Chairman Rogers. I knew that would trip you up.
I'm gonna. Get me confused now. Okay, to make it clear, to make it clear, we're voting here. I'm voting to stay on the board. So you put it down.
Got it.
Back of the wedge.
You can say aye to denying objector's motion.
Aye, okay.
I will say aye as well. Trustee Henry?
No, no, no.
Okay, motion passed. Motion passed, two ayes. Okay, I'd like, I'd like a mo- uh, a motion to have a recess for another day.
Oh wait, I think we still have a couple matters that maybe some housekeeping matters, Attorney Samuelson. I know that there was. We had filed some requests for subpoenas. And I believe that in the other cases where Mr. Gianopolis is, is working with the candidates, there were some objections filed. I wasn't sure if he was planning on doing the same. If he was planning on filing a motion to dismiss on those. So I think there might be some more briefing schedules. Things that may need to happen. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Um, and because we, we stopped so abruptly on this case and on the, um, on the Towers case. We didn't get through the full agenda from the last meeting. So. Actually, I'm gonna go back to the, I would, I would ask that we go back to where we left off. Uh, in the last meeting, confirming appearances, entry of the exhibits. Um, the summary of the issues, and then we can move on to discussion on those subpoenas, just so that way we. We've done everything on this case that we did on the other case as well.
Works for me.
Makes sense, makes sense.
Okay. I missed it.
So we're going back to, um, it would be introduction of the parties and the filing of appearance.
Okay.
If you're looking for an introduction, Dennis Gianopolis appearing on behalf of the respondent candidate, uh, or the candidate, Charles Higgins.
And Tiffany Nelson Jaworski, I can't even talk, I'm sorry. Tiffany Nelson Jaworski appearing on behalf of the objector.
And I can confirm that both parties have filed appearances. And they have already confirmed that they have also received copies of the rules of procedure.
Yes.
That's correct.
And so then next would be the introduction labeling and entry of electoral board exhibits. Mayor, would you like me to read the electoral board exhibits into the record?
If you could.
Okay. Exhibit number one is the objector's petition. Exhibit number two are the candidate's nomination papers. Exhibit number three is the call of the electoral board. Exhibit number five is the agenda for the first initial hearing. Uh, which took place on December 15th, 2020. Exhibit number five are the proofs of service, waivers of service, and appearances filed by the parties in the applicable electoral board case. Exhibit number six is the rule, are the rules of procedure. Exhibit number seven are the proofs of service and waivers of service filed by the board members. And then we would need a motion to accept the electoral board's exhibits into evidence.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion to accept the exhibits into evidence, Chairman Rogers.
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Henry?
Aye.
Motion, motion passed. Oh, three ayes. Exhibit number two?
Sorry, Mayor.
Yes, okay. Are we accepting all of these?
Yes, that was my motion.
All right, good. Summary of issues. Request for objectors attorneys to provide summary of issues raised. And whether they are purely legal or if they are factual matters to be determined and. Whether records examination will be needed.
So if I may, again, Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector. Uh, the objections to Charles Higgins relate mostly to the, relate entirely to the use of his name and what his correct name is. And the voter confusion that follows thereafter because of him not using the correct name. So at the address that the candidate is registered to vote, there are two Charles Higgins. There's Charles B. Higgins and Charles H. Higgins. The nominating petitions. Simply state Charles Higgins. They do not, they do not delineate or differentiate between. Charles H. Higgins and Charles B. Higgins. When those petitions are circ- were circulated, the voters. Could not and would not know. Whether it was Charles B. Higgins or Charles H. Higgins who's running for office. Maybe they really like Charles B. Higgins but can't stand Charles H. Higgins. But they signed the petition because they thought it was Charles B. rather than Charles H. or vice versa. Maybe they think Charles H. is highly qualified for office. But that Charles B. would not be qualified whatsoever. And as such, it's situations like this where there is a substantial basis for voter confusion. Because you have two people with the exact same name with the, the only differentiation being between the two names. Being the middle initial, omitting that middle initial. The question that arises, was that a mistake or was that a purposeful? Thing? Was that an attempt to get more signatures? Based upon, some people might possibly like Charles H. or some people might possibly like Charles B. and think that that person is qualified. There's clearly a potential for voter confusion as it relates to the face of the petitions as well as. The rest of the nomination papers. And because of that voter confusion. These nomination papers of specifically of Charles H., Charles Higgins, whether it's Charles H. Higgins or Charles B. Higgins, we still don't know. Nobody knows at this point. Whether. Those nomination petitions were correct, whether those nomination papers were correct, and his name should be stricken from the ballot as he did not fully state his name. Thank you.
Any rebuttal to that?
Yes, Dennis Gianopolis on behalf of the candidate. The, the assertion that the names of Charles Higgins, uh, create some form of voter confusion or that there's two Charles Higgins. Living at the address, and this boils down effectively to a legal issue. But I'd like to clarify just for the record that there is only one Charles Higgins living at the address. And that is Charles B. Higgins. Whose certified voter registration records show him to be Charles B. Higgins, who is the candidate. And Charles H. Higgins Jr. So there is a Charles Higgins Jr., not the candidate, and a Charles Higgins, the candidate, who correctly listed his name as Charles Higgins. So to the extent that we can obviate the, the issue with, with the subpoena. Uh, I'll stipulate to the fact that Charles Higgins is Charles B. Higgins. The, well, well, once that. Determination is made, then we move on to a legal issue. And the legal issue quite frankly is whether or not. It is fatal not to list a middle initial. And I would cite to the board when the time is appropriate. The express provisions of the Illinois Municipal Code, or I'm sorry, the Illinois Election Code. Which specifically addresses the issue of middle initials, juniors, seniors, and the like. Indicating that there is no mandatory requirement whatsoever of the election code. Differentiating or requiring someone to use a middle initial or omit a middle initial. I believe this issue can be squarely addressed on a legal basis. And perhaps by stipulation, avoid the, the request for the subpoena currently pending for such things as income tax records. Income tax records over a middle initial? I, I don't believe there's any basis. For securing or seeking such records. Uh, but we can address that as subsequently.
If I may, just briefly in reply, uh, the, I also have the certified voter registration records for the address. On the petitions, which is 14322 Irving Avenue. I have those on my computer screen. I can share those if you. If you'd like. Does anybody have any objection to me sharing them on the screen?
No. I'm sorry.
How personal is it?
Uh, well, it's got the, it's got their address and it's got their voter, it's got their certification number.
I have no objection, unless, uh. His attorney?
Says, um, the attorney for, um.
Mr. Higgins.
Yes, do you have an objection?
He'll be showing a certificate of registration for 14322 Higgins, uh, Irving in Dalton.
Yeah, and you know, it seems that I'm not able to screenshot right now. So, you know, I'll just go over it and I'll just tell everybody kind of what's going on. Because obviously, you know, we may be briefing this, um, and this is just sort of the introduction of the case. So registered to vote at that address are Kenneth Williams. Charles H. Higgins Jr. and Charles B. Higgins. So if counsel, I mean, I, I would agree to a stipulation in counsel and I can speak off record or off the record, but I would be. Willing to agree to a stipulation that that's what the certified voter registration records state, and I can forward those to counsel and we can have that discussion. Counsel is correct that this is primarily a legal issue. I don't think that there's really any facts. Except for which Charles Higgins this is, because on the face of the petitions, you can't really tell which Charles Higgins this is. And I do agree that while the election code, code states that middle initials are not required. When you have a situation of people having the exact same name and there's a basis for voter confusion. There are certain things that need to be done to ensure the voter confusion doesn't ensue. And. It's my opinion as well as. You know, so it's my opinion and I think the opinion of many people. That in a situation like this where you have somebody who has the exact same name, but the only differentiation again is a middle initial and maybe a junior at the end, a suffix at the end. That those things need to be placed on the nominating petitions so that the voters know. Are we voting, are we signing up for senior or free signing for junior? Again, some may think that, that senior should not be a trustee. Some may think that junior should not be a trustee. But the voter should be allowed to make that choice. And by only putting Charles Higgins and not Charles B. Higgins or Charles H. Higgins Jr., the voters were deprived of that choice. So that is the summary of my argument. I understand that there's potentially going to be some briefing, but if counsel is willing to. Stipulate to the certified voter results, which I'll send to him right now, um, I think they were included in my. Brief, uh, but. I will send those over to counsel. And we can deal with that.
Would certainly be willing to stipulate the public record, um, and again, I appreciate counsel's willingness to do so. That should obviate the need for the subpoena request that's pending. Because with no factual matters in dispute, there would be no need to subpoena the records. On an issue that's legally, uh, of legal concern only. Um, and just briefly, um. And I appreciate counsel's opinion. That certain information would be helpful or beneficial to the voters. But that's not the standard that this board is charged to, 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 to deal with. It's a statutory interpretation of the provisions of the Illinois Election Code. Not what a given individual happens to believe would be a better way to do it.
Um, so if, um, there's a stipulation, just a housekeeping matter, does that mean that, uh, the objector will withdraw their, their motion for subpoenas?
Uh, I will have to confer with my client to ensure that she is okay with that, uh. So I would, I would like to reserve that decision if I can send an email later today regarding the subpoenas, uh, but if we have the stipulation. You know. Probably, I, I just gotta confer with her and make sure that she's okay with that.
Okay, um, so, uh, Mr. Mayor?
I'm here.
Okay, uh, since there's, um, a potential that the objector will, uh, withdraw their request for subpoenas. I would suggest that we, um, move on to setting the schedule for any motion, argument. And possibly a, a date for any type of stipulation. Does the candidate's attorney have any objection to a date for which you issue a stipulation? Or does my stipulate on the record? Is that, is that sufficient?
I, well, counsel's not prepared to, to stipulate, but, um. I, i- i- it appears the matter will be resolved by way of stipulation. I believe that to, to be the case and I believe counsel does as well. And again, I apologize, though perhaps we should have had a pre-trial discussion and then have resolved this and had an agreed stipulation at the time of the hearing. So I apologize to the members of the board for not having done that.
Okay, so then I guess the next step would be to set a schedule for motions and arguments.
Yes.
Now, is this, uh, and we're going forward just because, uh, the attorney has made a, a, I'm not sure if it was a suggestion or motion that we, uh, do away with the subpoenas?
It, it was a, a suggestion that you, um, set those for a, whatever we decide our future date is. To set those subpoenas for hearing on our next date. Um, and to instead, I think we would know our next date after we figure out the, um, briefing schedule for any motions.
Okay, um, is there suggested date?
I believe, uh, counsel, we're looking for a date on a briefing schedule for motions to strike and dismiss, I take it?
Yes.
I could have my brief, um, by 5:00 PM on Wednesday?
Okay, any objections to that?
Mayor, what, um, you said, so we doing something Wednesday? I'm trying to follow you guys.
So, um, the candidate will be filing his preliminary motions on Wednesday, December 23rd at 5:00 PM.
Oh, but it's no court?
Yeah, it's not a hearing day.
Oh, just, okay.
Don't worry, we won't be, we'll, we'll have until after the holiday, after at least the Christmas holiday.
Okay, sounds great.
Uh, I just wanted to interject really quickly. I did hear back from, from my client, we can in fact withdraw the request for subpoenas. So we'll just go forward, uh, based on the stipulation as to the certified records provided. Mr. Giannopoulos is okay with the certified registration records I just sent over to him. And then if I may, as it relates to a response to the motion to strike and dismiss, if I could have, uh, maybe Monday at noon, or I guess when are we gonna be reconvening? Cause I obviously want to give the board enough time to read my briefs. Um, we do have the holiday this week, which happy holidays to everybody.
How about, how about, uh, February 24th?
That might be a little late, we usually don't get along. Appreciate you. Um, so if, if there's no objection, um, Monday, the 28th, if I could have until maybe 1:00 PM so that that way we have enough time to, the board has enough time to review it. I, I assume we'll probably meet again on Tuesday or Wednesday of that week, but it's.
Okay, what, um, this is for the court hearing of the, you want to file your brief on that day?
Yeah, th- this is to file my response to Mr. Giannopoulos's motion to dismiss.
So, um, Mr. Giannopoulos, you will have yours ready this Wednesday by 5?
Yes.
Okay, anyway, um, Ms., is it Nelson or?
Nelson Jaworski. Yeah, I got married and had to take the husband's name. I told him to take mine, Nelson's much easier to spell, but he wouldn't listen.
Any relation to Ron Jaworski?
No, but you know what? I'll, I have a funny story where my husband used to joke around and tell people that he had Uncle Ronnie, that, you know, that was his favorite uncle. So I did buy my husband a Ron Jaworski signed jersey to put in, in our basement, so.
Okay, okay, but any rate, um, any rate, any, any way to speed that up a little bit? You know, we're coming up into the holidays, we're coming up into the, the, for, the, uh, New Year's Eve to try to get this whole matter settled so we can get some ballot numbers and know who's on the ballot and things like that and.
Well, that's what I was gonna see, that's why I was asking for Monday. So, cause obviously there's Christmas Eve and Christmas, um, so I was really trying to hope to have a day or two.
If we can get brief filed by five.
Working on it over Saturday and Sunday. Uh, maybe if I can have Monday at 10:00 AM, that way everybody will have it in their mailbox Monday morning.
No, I was gonna say if we can get your brief filed at the same time as Attorney Giannopoulos.
Oh, no, I can't, no, my, my brief is in response to his brief. So I can't, I mean, Dennis and I have known each other for a long time and I can sometimes predict what he's thinking, but not like that.
Counsel need an opportunity to respond, just you gotta see what I put on the table before she can respond to it.
Okay, or, or if you don't choose to respond, we can speed this up too, but, uh.
Well, I'll respond.
But anyway, you know, uh, we're approaching the holidays and would like to try to get all of this stuff squared away.
Yeah, it, I completely appreciate the, the lightning's, lightning fast pace, we need to move this along. Um, so if, if I could just, I mean, cause I just want to have time to re, you know, brief it, proof it and get it all ready for you guys. So that's why it originally suggested Monday at like noon or one o'clock. That way you guys still have it, you have half a business day to review it. Believe me, it's not gonna be more than like four or five pages, I'm sure.
Right, and then, you know, if we were to eliminate the process of the subpoenas, that would shorten the process too here.
Well, we already have, I just, yeah, I, I just put on the record that my client is okay with, um, with dismissing the request for subpoenas, so I will withdraw, on the record, I am withdrawing those requests for subpoenas. So we are just solely dealing with the motion to strike and dismiss.
Great, okay.
So do we want to come back then on Tuesday, uh, December 29th? Does that date work for everyone?
You're with us for one second.
For a hearing on the motion, uh, the anticipated motion to strike and dismiss?
Mr. Giannopoulos, would I give you enough time to review her, um, response to your briefs?
That would give me enough time. I don't know what time is being contemplated, but I do have a physician's appointment, um, at 10:30.
What time would work, uh, what time do you think he would be available?
I, I believe that it would be sufficient if we could do it, it's a, um, one o'clock.
Yeah.
Would I give you enough time, uh, is the physician close approximately?
Uh, i- i- it's, it's a rush, but they're usually pretty prompt about getting me in and out. So the one, one o'clock should be sufficient.
Okay, that's, does that work for everyone?
That works for me, I mean, I have the whole afternoon right now open for that. So Dennis, if you need to move it back even further, just to give yourself some cushion, I'm fine with that.
Maybe take it to two o'clock if that's convenient with everyone else.
That's fine.
That's fine, I suggest it, yeah. Okay, great.
Okay, so just to recap the, uh, schedule for motions and arguments. And any preliminary motions will be due Wednesday, December 23rd, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Responses will be due Monday, December 28th at 10:00 AM. Hearing on arguments is December 29th, which is a Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Um, and I think we were doing a motion to accept the briefing schedule previously.
Yes, was there a motion on the floor? Madam, no, okay. Why don't we make a motion to accept the briefing schedule as noted?
I'll make a motion to accept the briefing schedule as noted.
Second it.
Well, Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
For Dugan, I, Trustee Henry?
Aye.
Motion carries, three ayes. Okay, now do we need a motion for the continuation of the hearing on the 20, mm, 9?
29th at 2:00 PM, yes you do.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for a, um, briefing hearing schedule, if, if you will, uh, for the 20, 9th, December 29th at 2:00 PM.
Second.
Just, just the second, second by Trustee Henry, uh, roll call.
On the continuance to the 29th, Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
For Dugan, I, Trustee Henry?
Aye.
Motion carries now, uh, can we adjourn this meeting, go into another?
Um, I think what we should have done is, uh, motion to recess this, yeah, board until. Actually, no, I don't know that we need that, I think we can just move on into the next hearing.
Yeah, it's the same board, so.
Okay, I like, I like taking five minute recess.
That's fine, is that for everyone?
Yeah, I got a question, um, you didn't set a date for the one we were just speaking about, right? For Towers?
We're about to enter into Towers. We haven't done, we haven't done, we haven't handled Towers yet.
Okay, all right.
All right, so it could all come back in five minutes, so like 1:42? 1:45, does that work?
That, that's, that works, 1:45, recess to 1:45.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Okay, it's 1:45, uh, should we convene now? Is everybody on board?
Um, looks like everybody's starting to come back.
So.
All right. Thank you. Um.
Hey Amber, here's Giovanni, I just want to make sure you, um, you've been able to see the message I sent.
Yes, I can see the, um, public comments.
Okay, just make sure.
Looking through them right now to see, um, because the public comment period was at the beginning of the last agenda. So I'm looking to, uh, see what public comments there are as they relate to candidate Towers.
Okay.
Are we, um, are we, is everybody on board yet? Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, you done, are you, are you done reviewing the comments? Attorney Samus?
Yes, uh, what's the question?
I know you said you were reviewing that comments for the Towers case.
I have access to all of the comments, so when we get to the, uh, public comment portion of the agenda, I will read the ones that seem to be related to the motion to disqualify, um, for Towers, I will say, it seems that with the public comments, some more conversation between individuals, um, than, than comments for the board, so.
Okay. All right, I'll just read the, uh, open meetings, um, public notice, open meetings act public notice, is that necessary? We go right into roll call, call to order.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's the question?
Do I need to read the open meetings, public notice, uh, notice, or can we go right into the roll call?
Um, you should read the statement and findings of in-person meeting unfeasibility due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay.
And then go into, um, introduce yourself and then the roll call.
Right. This is municipal offices Electoral Board of Village of Dalton, continuing Electoral Board hearing, December 21st, 2020. Um, I am the chairperson Riley Rogers and/or the Electoral Board attorney, why don't you identify yourself?
Uh, attorney, Amber Samuelson.
Okay, great. Please be advised that on December 11th, 2020, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency, uh, executive orders implementing further enhanced mitigation measures and restrictions. As such pursuant to section 7C, I'm sorry, 7E of the Illinois Opens Meeting Act and the rules of procedure. And as chair of this board, I have determined that holding a meeting entirely in person that is otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Open Meeting Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the ongoing disaster. To the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference and without requiring the physical presence of a quorum. I further find that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than 10 people at the regular meeting location in an accessible, hygienic, and legally compliant manner is not feasible. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporarily hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meeting Act. All participants are hereby further notice, notify that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed of this meeting's public recording. Thank you. Um, the introduction of municipal officers for the Electoral Board. As stated and explained at the prior hearing in this matter, I am Riley Rogers, the chairperson of the Electoral Board. Also serving on the Electoral Board is the village clerk Mary Kay Dugan and the scene trustee Tiffany Henry. These members are provided by, provided for by the Illinois Election Code, which mandate mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates nomination papers. Madam clerk, will you take the role, please?
Chairman Rogers?
Here.
Clerk Dugan here, trustee Henry. Trustee Henry, are you here?
I'm here, present.
Okay, all right, we have a quorum established, uh, the appearance of the, the attorneys, can it confirm? Can, uh, who's here on zone?
Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector, Kiana L. Belcher.
And Dennis Gianopoulos on behalf of the candidate, Gail Towers.
Okay, great, um, and attorney Samuelson, you're here for the, for the Electoral Board, you have announced yourself already?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is there any public comment?
There are, um, two comments that have noted that their comments are for the board. The first public comment comes from, um, Duane Mohammed. How can any member of the board make a decision of disqualifying, um, candidates when money and political interests bind them? No running candidate should be on this electoral board. And then from Mike Smith, should all recuse yourselves. Um, and that's all that I have for, um, comments to the board.
I have no answer for that.
Well, I did, I answered that already. I said everyone should step down and everyone should, um, remove themselves from the board and basically let it be public members or the next sitting trustees. Um, I suggested that, um, the mayor nor the clerk wanted to do so and they wanted to stay on the board, so I answered that.
Thank you trustee, thank you trustee Henry. Um, okay, um, that's all for the public comment?
Um, that, that seems to be everything that was directly directed directly to the board related to the, uh, disqualifying of, um, disqualification for, uh, um, trustee Towers, or related to the trustee Towers case, I apologize. Um, am I correct, uh, Giovanni? She's still on?
Yes, I'm still here, you're accurate, yes.
Okay.
All right, great, I'd like to move on, uh, the adoption of the rules, rules of procedure.
Okay, um, as, as I said previously, the rules of procedure are the standard rules, they're the same rules that were adopted from Cook County and the city of Chicago. Um, they've been used by this board many times, the only, uh, the biggest difference is that the rules of procedure do address the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to have hearings remotely via Zoom.
Okay, great. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the rules of procedure as presented.
Second.
She's remoting it and second it to adopt the rules, roll call, madam clerk.
Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan?
Aye.
Trustee Henry?
Aye.
Most security, three ayes. Okay, um, madam, I'm sorry, attorney Samuelson, you want to go for it?
Um, sure, the, uh, next on the agenda is a recap of case status filing. Um, the initial hearing was held on December 15th, 2020. Case management order was issued subsequent thereto. The objector filed a motion to disqualify on December 16th, 2020. Candidate filed a response to the motion to disqualify on December 18th, 2020. The objector filed a motion for subpoena on December 16th, 2020. The candidate filed an objection to the objector's request for subpoena on December 17th, 2020. The objector filed a response to the objection on December 8th, 2020. Um, the next step is a proceeding on the motion to disqualify. Um, are we ready to have oral argument on the motion?
Attorney Jaworski?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying, I was trying to unmute myself. Uh, yes, we, I think Mr. Gianopoulos and I can both agree to adopt the arguments, uh, that we made in Higgins over to this matter, I just need to, I guess, I just wanted to briefly summarize what occurred in Higgins and if anybody has any, uh, disagreement with what I'm summarizing, then we could do that if that's okay. I just wanted to basically state that we had argued as the objector that there is a pecuniary interest because of the campaign literature between the parties, um, that clerk Dugan, clerk, uh, Mayor Rogers should both recuse themselves from the Electoral Board as it relates to this, this case, uh, because they are in fact not just running mates, uh, but we have argued that the billboard that is, that has all of their faces on it was paid for, paid for by friends of Riley Rogers. And as such, there is a pecuniary interest, um, but as stated, I will agree if council agreed to just adopt the arguments that were made in Higgins because they are identical.
I would certainly have no objection to agreeing to that, uh, stand on the arguments raised in the proceeding, uh, oral argument as well as the, uh, information contained in the written briefs.
And same, same here.
Okay, um, is there any further deliberation from the Electoral Board?
Um, not, not me. Madam clerk, any from you?
No.
Trustee Henry?
No.
Okay. All right, great, um.
Here, try that motion again.
What was that?
Are you going to try that motion again?
I was going to say, you know, to simplify, um, we're staying, uh, at least I am, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to recluse myself from, from the hearing. Um, so however you want to put it, madam clerk, so we can vote on it.
Well, uh, in the prior case, the motion was to deny objector's motion to disqualify yourself and myself. And that was your motion and my second.
Yeah.
So do you want to motion again?
Um.
You deny the objector's motion to disqualify?
That's my motion.
Okay, and that's my second.
Okay, so, so ma'am, I do want to put my, um, comments on record, which is the same as the last, uh, case Higgins. So I do feel that you two, meaning the clerk and, uh, Mayor Rogers, should recuse themselves and remove themselves from this Electoral Board. I do believe you two are biased in, um, being the judge for your candidate who's running for trustee on your ticket. And I think you guys should not be allowed to judge them as it relates to them being on the ballot, um, for 2021, a February election. Um, that's my statement, thanks.
And I would like to clarify my earlier understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, that absent a financial interest, pecuniary interest, bias alone is not even allowable grounds for disqualification? Is that a correct statement, as I understand the, uh, previous arguments?
Well, I just, you guys not gonna, she's not gonna get a fair trial, um, because you guys are going to allow her to stay on the ballot regardless of what the evidence states. So that's why I was stating it should consist of public members or, uh, the next trustees, uh, that have seniority on this board.
Well, the next trustee is also running for trustee, so my question or my statement before was, again, my understanding, if we're talking bias alone, that's not a ground to recuse, even permissible, even if we all wanted to do that. But, uh, if we all wanted to do that, and meaning all the candidates, all the current members of each and every board who are running for office and replace all of the boards with public members, I personally would be very okay with that. But what I understand is that's not allowable.
How, if you're, you're recreasing yourself, you're saying, uh, I, Mary Kay Dugan, don't want to sit on Electoral Board, that's it, it's done. Then they pick a public member, which I could have sworn, uh, attorney Tiffany Nelson stated, uh, when she read arguments earlier about replacing the boy with public members, if it's not a trustee, so.
In the, in the matter, there is a financial interest, but as far as bias alone, which you, uh, returning to trustee Henry, bias alone under the, and I, this is what I understand, and I'd be happy to, to be, for the attorneys to clarify this. Uh, from what I understand from the Cook County Court rule, political support or opposition bias is not in itself grounds and to recuse. In other words, we may not recuse ourselves if we, even if we want to, absent a financial or pecuniary conflict.
Um, I'll take the invitation from counsel to briefly address, uh, what I believe member Dugan is referring to is the argument that I advanced, uh, and read general order 21, section 5B of the Circuit Court of Cook County, which indicates that, again, and I'll quote, neither may a statutory member cause of vacancy to be filled by this general order by a personal preference or convenience, or that a statutory member not to sit merely because a party has requested such disqualification. Um, the, the, rule 10-9 mandates the composition of electoral boards and provides limited, I don't want to get into argument again, but that's my understanding of what language the clerk wa- was referring to.
Yes. And if I, if I just, if I just made one thing I wanted to point out, that does state that, you know, because of personal preference or convenience, that does not state that if the, if the individual does not feel that they can provide an unbiased decision, then they can't, if somebody feels that they cannot hear a case unbiased and, and be unbiased, it's my belief that even with general order 21, that they could then recuse themselves. Um, but that's, you know, again, based upon their, that's not a personal preference or convenience, that they're, that's their own personal view that they cannot be unbiased.
For the record, I would agree that if the board members felt that they, um, could not be fair and objective and the, the, uh, a recusal might be appropriate, um, but the. Um, but the issue of political bias being alleged is the issue that I was addressing.
Thank you.
Um, did we have a motion with the second, uh, on the table?
I believe I was waiting for trustee, trustee, excuse me, Chairman Rogers to make the motion, as he did the last time.
Um, I just want to add to the previous discussion before I make the motion.
Uh?
I'd like to add to the previous discussion before I make the motion. Um, first of all, I want to ask, is there a court reporter?
Mm-hmm.
On board here? Okay, I didn't, I didn't see her, or it was mentioned earlier. Secondly, I'd like to, um, make the remarks since everybody's putting things on the record, that, um, uh, to mention the fact what clerk Dugan had mentioned earlier in the previous case in regards when the, the objections were filed, uh, you want to talk about relationships. Uh, well, uh, our senior trustee was with the objector when she filed the objections. And secondly, when you want to talk about billboards, there's a billboard appearing now on I ninety-four with the senior trustee and the person that filed the objections. So when you want to talk about unbiased opinions, um, can she not be unbiased? Um, so moving forward, I just wanted to make, make those remarks for the record. When you talk about relationships and financial inter- interest, and certainly there was a financial interest to put a billboard, uh, uh, attorney Jaworski, uh, when you talk about financial interest and expense it as far as much as what they cost and things like that. So, um, there's an interest between a party that's on this board and a party that filed the objections. And I just wanted to make that clear and enter that into the record. Now I'd like to make a motion, the motion.
Okay, so hold on, ma'am, no, I'm going to rebut it, so.
Now I'm like.
You can make the motion, hold on, the discussion, I can still see my part, I am a member as well.
Okay, go ahead, we'll listen, we'll listen.
So, so ma'am, if you feel, because you just put your foot in your mouth, that that's a financial issue having a billboard, then why aren't you recusing yourself? And if you guys wanted me off of this board, guess what you could have done? You could have easily put it up and said, I do not want trustee Henry to sit on the electoral board. You guys did no such thing, ma'am, so that's why I'm still on the board. So I also offered you guys of our branch and said I would remove myself if you two remove yourself. You guys still deciding not to do so and still want to sit on the board. So that tells me one thing, that you guys want to keep your candidate on the ballot, period. Because we all can remove ourselves by verbally saying, we're not going to sit on this board. We're going to go and seek out public members to sit on the electoral board as it relates to Gail Towers and, um, Charles Higgins. But no one is saying that but trustee Henry, so stop it. Thank you.
And you don't understand that you'd be willing to recuse yourself from all, membership on all of the boards?
All what boards? I sit on this board. So if you want to remove yourself, let's go, we all can remove ourselves. I've been put that out there.
Objections to other.
But no one is saying what I'm saying, but me.
Ho, 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 all right, you made your comment, thank you.
You're welcome.
My comment was in regards to the objector's attorney, when she brought up the fact about billboards. So I just wanted to enter into record that there still is a relationship between yourself and the objector that appears on the billboard. And when she brought up a fact about financial interest, the, the billboards are expensive and they have to be paid for. So I just wanted to get into that in the record as far as the relationship there.
Right, but what I'm saying is that you're agreeing with her. Basically, you're stating that that's a financial interest, is what you just stated. Hold on, that's what you just stated. So that's the case, that was her argument, that's what you said, and you said the opposite. But it relates to me, you, you're agreeing with her, that's my point. If you're agreeing with her, remove yourself, ma'am. Ma'am, let, look, if you want to remove yourself.
We heard your comment, we heard your comment, trustee.
Do you want to remove yourself?
We heard your comment.
Do you want to remove yourself? I would remove myself too. So are you willing to remove yourself, ma'am?
I'm asking order right now.
And I, okay, it is order. I had the floor.
I'm asking order.
Are you willing to remove yourself, ma'am? Because I am, are you?
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
I'm fine with that.
Go ahead with the motion.
Right, that's what happened, like I thought, we putting on our show for what? But you're not going to do nothing.
Trustee, you are out of order right now, trustee, you are out of order right now.
But you're putting on a show, why?
You've made your comment, you are out of order right now.
I'm willing to remove myself, trustee Tiffany Henry from this electoral board. If A, Riley Rogers remove his stuff, and B, uh, clerk Dugan remove her stuff from the board. That way it will be unbiased and we can have a fair trial.
Lucky.
There it is.
I think there was a motion that had been made and seconded, so.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Trustee Henry, uh, do you, are you including, uh, recusing yourself from hearing objections to the other trustee candidates and the clerk candidate?
Uh, clerk Dugan, we talking about this one right now, y'all ain't gave me an answer, so stop it. So is you going to recuse yourself from this one, then I will, but on both of y'all. You both remove yourself, I will remove myself too. I don't have to sit on the board.
Trustee Henry, trustee Henry, okay, that's not the motion on the floor.
Exactly, so I'm talking about, y'all ain't gonna do it.
Okay, I, I understand that would be a no, okay. Uh, Mayor Rogers, have you made your motion to deny objector's motion to disqualify?
Just clarify it again.
Yeah, same as before. Motion to deny the objector's motion to disqualify yourself and myself.
Aye.
So moved, okay, I will second. Roll call. Chairman Rogers.
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye, trustee Henry.
Definitely not.
Okay, two ayes, one nay.
Okay, let's attorney.
All right, um. Uh, next, so the proceedings on the objections to Beltre versus Towers, twenty twenty, DMOEV oh seven. Um, and I would ask, I, because we didn't do this in the last hearing, I would ask that the parties introduce themselves, um, and confirm that they have, uh, received a copy of the rules of procedure.
Yes, Tiffany Nelson Jaworski for the objector, and as I confirm, we have in fact received a copy of the rules of procedure.
And this Gianopolis on behalf of the candidate, and I acknowledge receipt of the rules of procedure as well.
Okay, and I will confirm that both parties have filed their appearances. Um, and next would be the introduction labeling and entry of electoral board exhibits. Exhibit number one is the objector's petition. Exhibit number two, candidate's nomination papers. Exhibit three, the call of the electoral board. Exhibit four, the agenda for the initial hearing. Exhibit five, proofs of service, waivers of service, and appearances filed by the parties in the applicable electoral board case. Exhibit six, the rules of procedure. And exhibit seven, proofs of service, waivers of service filed by the board members. I would ask that a motion be made to accept the electoral board's exhibits into evidence, and those would be exhibits one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion to accept the exhibits one through seven, did this include the rules of procedure as well? Or is that a separate one?
Uh, it does, the, the rules of procedure are exhibit six.
I thought I heard that, okay.
Yep.
Okay, Chairman Rogers. Chairman Rogers, roll call.
Sorry, but the head on meal, aye?
Aye, clerk Dugan, aye, trustee Henry.
Aye.
Motion carried, three ayes.
Um, at this time, I would ask that the objector's attorney provide a summary of issues raised and state whether they are purely legal or if there are factual matters to be determined, to be determined.
Thank you, uh, thank you, members of the board, for your time. So this case involves Gail Towers. Uh, Gail Towers, on her nomination papers, purported to live at an address in the village of Dalton. Um, however, upon information and belief and based upon reasonable investigation, Gail Towers does not in fact live at one four five one seven Van Buren in Dalton. She does, in fact, reside at and has maintained residency at one five two four one Norton Drive. Uh, we intend to submit evidence to show that Ms. Ms. Towers actually has a deed with her name on it for the property in South Holland on one five two four one Norton Drive, that she and her husband Houston Towers, in fact, purchased the property in, I believe, December of two thousand sixteen. They also have been collecting a homeowner's exemption on that property. And to collect a homeowner's ex- exemption, you actually have to reside in the property. So they have been collecting a homeowner's exemption on the South Holland property. And in addition to that, uh, the property at the one four five one seven Van Buren is actually not owned by either Houston Towers or Gail Towers and is instead owned by Jureece Towers, who is also collecting a homeowner's exemption. So the property that they purport to live at contains a homeowner's exemption of somebody else, Jureece Towers, possibly a relative, I'm not sure. And the home at which they have been collecting the homeowner's exemption, which is the home that I submit that they actually have residence in, not the home in Dalton, that at that home, again, they've been collecting a homeowner's exemption since at least two thousand sixteen. So based upon the reasonable investigation already performed and the additional evidence that we hope to get through the subpoenas that have been requested, it's our opinion and it's our submission that Gail Towers is in fact not a resident of the village of Dalton, has not been a resident of the village of Dalton for one year as required under law. And that's further bolstered by the fact that she, uh, she just had a, uh, some inspections done at the property in South Holland. And on those inspection reports, the village of South Holland has deemed her and her husband Houston to be the owners of the property. If they're owning property, if they're collecting a homeowner's exemption on the property, they are residing in the property and they do not have residency elsewhere. And as such, the objector's petition should be sustained and that will be what we will be presenting and requesting through, uh, the subpoena requests that have already been submitted. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gianopolis?
Yes, members of the board, we're so, so easy to be a set. The, there's been much said about the ownership of property. This is not the issue raised in the objector's petition. The ownership of property, quite frankly, has no bearing to the provisions of the Illinois Election Code. The issue is one of residency. There's allegations of residency, however, the supporting allegations put forward by the objector, or I should say, the unsupporting allegations put by the objector point to the fact that there's real property owned by the candidate. The fact that the candidate owns real property is not dis- uh, dispositive of the issue of residency. Likewise, the allegation is to the claim for a homeowner's exemption or a homestead exemption for purposes of tax assessment purposes isn't relevant to the determination of whether or not, uh, the candidate is a resident at the address stated on her statement of candidacy. Uh, many people own more than one property. I myself, if I were a candidate, if I were a resident of, uh, the village of Dalton and I, and I lived in the village of Dalton, someone could come along and claim that I don't have residency in the village of Dalton because my name is on a deed at one eighty-five eleven Torrance Avenue. Well, that has nothing to do with residency. That's an address of my business for which I own property, but it has no bearing on the issue of residency. Many people, uh, fortunate enough to own several properties within a village, might have one, two, three properties in the village. That doesn't address the issue of residency. And the fact that the homestead exemption might, might or might not have been claimed is a red herring because homestead exemptions aren't limited to just the owner of the property. An individual with a leasehold interest can be eligible for the homestead exemption where, um, where they have an obligation to pay the real estate taxes and that's their place of residency. So much has been said about multiple properties, but little has been said of the elements of residency, which is set forth in a recent Illinois Supreme Court decision out of the city of Chicago, the Maxim decision, which gives quite good information as far as what needs to be said or needs to be determined when someone objects or attacks residency of an individual. I believe all the facts will be borne out to show that the candidate is qualified, filed a statement of candidacy, and is rightfully seeking her placement on the ballot in the February primary in the village of Dalton.
Just, just very quickly in reply to that, it is, it is our contention that the homeowner's exemption is actually very important. Um, even when somebody has a leasehold, their name is then on it. It is, it is on there. Right now, we have a situation where, where Ms. Towers and her husband are collecting a homeowner's exemption in South Holland, but allegedly they're not living in South Holland. Allegedly, she is living in, in Dalton, at this address in Dalton. So it's one of two things, either she's fraudulently collecting a homeowner's exemption or she doesn't live in Dalton. So.
Or, or, or it's possible that the homestead exemption might have been claimed by an estranged spouse and not claimed by the candidate. That's what the facts will have to bear out.
Okay, um, the next thing on the agenda in regard, is regarding the, um, motion for subpoena. I would ask, are the parties ready to, uh, for a hearing on the motions for subpoenas? Or would you rather set that for whenever we come back, um, on the motions to strike and dismiss, which I assume are going to be filed?
Well, I think we kind of, if, if I may, I think we kind of have a short timeframe. Um, and obviously these subpoenas, it's going to take some time to get them out and get the information back. Well, we do have at least, you know, six or seven documents. Um, but we do have at least six or seven documents that will potentially be helpful to us and to, to prove the allegations that we made on, in good faith. Uh, it, I think it'd probably be better if, if Mr. Gianopolis is prepared. I'm prepared to argue the motion as it relates to the request for subpoenas and get the boards ruling to see if we can even get the subpoenas. If we can't get the subpoenas, then we're just going to have to go forward with the motion to dismiss. And I'll obviously have to make my record as it relates to the board's either acceptance or denial of the subpoenas or granting or denial of the subpoenas.
I'm prepared to proceed as well.
Okay.
Attorney, uh, Jaworski, um, in our earlier case in regards to Higgins, and you mentioned the fact that you're willing to, uh, forego the subpoenas. Uh, I thought you meant in both cases, but you're just, uh.
No, sir, no, there, there is, uh, two different issues. Higgins, Higgins is simply limited to the middle initial.
Right.
Uh, here we have a much more fact-intensive issue as it relates to the, um, as it relates to the status of, of the candidate and where she lives.
Now, who are you?
And I would also like to amend my, my request for subpoenas based upon information that the candidate just stated. I would also like to add a subpoena for the personal testimony of Houston Towers.
Okay, so you're looking to go forward with the subpoenas?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and of course, that's, as you mentioned earlier, uh, that's a very time-consuming, uh, matter. Um. So are we going to just argue for the subpoenas today? And, um, and if, if the board decides to go forward with the subpoenas, then, then you'll ask for a date until the subpoenas are actually issued?
Yes, I mean, if, if, if the board agrees to allow me to issue the subpoenas, we'll be sending, you know, I'll just need them back signed. Um, the dates will need to be changed on them, obviously. Uh, but I'll just need them back signed and then we will issue them.
Okay.
Send them out.
Now, you know the matter of issuing subpoenas and, and catching up with the, 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 um, the person to be served could take a, could be a very timely matter.
Um, that's precisely why I wanted to start this process. And that, that was why I submitted the request for subpoenas the day after our initial hearing.
Yes, okay, so why don't we argue the, the subpoena matter? Uh, let the board vote on it today and then we'll see where we go?
Um, and well, as it relates to the subpoenas that we requested in this case, I think that the subpoenas that we requested in this case are squarely on point with the information that is, is being sought as it relates to the candidate's residency in, I, in the village of Dalton or in the village of South Holland, which we contend that she is actually a resident of the village of South Holland. Uh, her tax returns, I believe, would be very illuminating to see where exactly she files her taxes and which property she is claiming as her house and her taxes. Uh, the Cook County Treasurer's Office obviously would have information as to the taxes paid on the properties, who, and who owns the properties. Uh, the Cook County Clerk Recording Department is also going to have such relevant information as would the assessor and the Board of Review. The Elections Department would give information as to where Ms. Towers has cast her ballot. The Elections Department would give information as to where Ms. Towers has cast her ballot in the last few elections, as well as where her current voter registration is. The Vital Records Department would potentially give us information related to Mr. Towers and Mrs. Towers' marriage license and marriage status. Uh, the Commonwealth Edison bills, the Nycor bills and People's Gas bills, those would all give potential evidence as to whether there is actual occupancy at these, uh, these addresses. The Village of Dalton subpoena would be, would enable us to have the information required, or I'm sorry, the information that would be relevant to determining whether the candidate in fact is occupying the property in Dalton and whether she has ever occupied the property in Dalton to establish her residency. And finally, the Village of South Holland, uh, we already have some very, very great information from the Village of South Holland. And I thank them for a timely response to a FOIA request. And the Village of South Holland, you know, clearly that is something that is, is extremely relevant because the candidate allegedly lives in South Holland. There's water bills showing water usage in South Holland as was submitted with our response to the objection to our, our motion or our request for subpoenas. And in fact, there's even an inspection report on December 4th, 2020 at 10:30 a.m. uh, by Inspector Mike Hampton of the Village of South Holland, where the owner of the property is listed as Houston and Gale Towers. So it specifically states both. So based upon, and the, oh, I'm sorry, also the property owner with the application that was submitted for a permit, it looks to me like this is Gale Towers, possibly Gale Towers' signature, I'm not quite sure. But Gale Towers seemingly submitted a building permit application or through her contractor submitted a building permit application for a re-roofing of the property in South Holland. That was submitted on November 25th, 2020. So they're collecting a homeowner's exemption. They're fixing the place up, putting a new roof on. She's listed as the owner. She's listed as the owner on the deed from 2016. She's listed as the owner on the property results, I'm sorry, on the FOIA and the property inspection report and the request, request for a permit as, as, as recent as November 25th and, and December 4th of this year, not last year, this year. So those things show that there is a reasonable basis for these subpoenas. And these subpoenas are designed specifically to elicit additional and admissible evidence as it relates to the candidate's lack of residency in the Village of Dalton, abandonment of said residency, if it ever even existed, and actual residency in the Village of South Holland. Thank you.
Okay, as, as the Attorney Jeanopoulos had mentioned earlier, uh, that it's not illegal, and I'm not sure if you use that term, to own and or possess a, um, additional properties. Uh, and those additional properties should be in that person's name. Now, you mentioned the fact that Nycor and ComEd, um, has indicated the, uh, residency for her there. Uh, now, I'm not sure of any ComEd representative and either Nycor representative that would actually say, yes, I saw her in the, in the residence there and that she's living there. They just merely, um, identify the, the person that's responsible for uh, the, the electric there or the, for the gases there. And that, that again can be in a landlord's name or a person that has additional property. But, um, I'm not sure, Attorney Jeanopoulos, if you want to comment on this and, uh, before we take a motion to, to move forward on the subpoena or not.
Yes, if I could have the opportunity to respond. First of all, on, on a preliminary basis, this board has adopted rules of procedure. It was done today, although they were provided at the last hearing. And I direct this board's attention to their rule three point, I'm sorry, Rule 3M, subparagraph M as in married. And that, that rule provides that the Electoral Board may, on its own motion or upon motion of a party, and I am moving and I have invoked Rule 3M in my objection to the request for the issuance of the subpoenas. So again, uh, the, the board may, on its own motion or on motion of any party, require the objector to make a preliminary showing that certain of the factual allegations in the objector's petitions are pled in good faith based on knowledge, information and/or belief formed after a reasonable inquiry. So that's what I'd like the board to focus upon, is the requirement that the investigation has been conducted and pled in good faith based on knowledge, information and/or belief formed after a reasonable inquiry. The reason I believe that language is important requires the board, before granting any subpoenas, to make a consideration as to the due diligence performed behind the investigation into the objector's petition. The objector's petition, the board will note, is not verified and it's not required. I'm not suggesting that a verified pleading is required by the election code when it comes to an answer. You do start out, however, with nomination papers that are presumptively valid, provided that the object, that there is no valid objection pending, that the nomination papers, which are sworn to under oath, notarized by a notary public. So you have verified opening documents in the nature of nomination papers. And then you have an unverified, subjecting someone to penalties of perjury and an unverified objector's petition. And again, typically where one would find in a, uh, in a document containing a verification, you, there, there would be the language attesting to the fact that a reasonable inquiry was conducted prior to the issuance of the documented issue. In the, in the objector's response, or I'm sorry, request for the issuance of subpoena de sussa stacom, she says the following with respect to the individual entities who are subject to the request for subpoenas. There, she asked for all entities, agencies, companies or persons maintain or likely maintain relevant information related to the candidate's residency. These people likely, not, not they do contain, but they likely contain is the allegation. So in other words, maybe they do, maybe they don't. I'm not sure. I don't know. But give me a subpoena and I'll exert, and I'll use that awesome power to, to, to delve into people's private affairs. Again, the very first thing asked for in this instance are tax returns. Tax returns somehow have a bearing on the issue of residency? I think not. Rule three, the board rules do not allow for the issuance of subpoenas where the person has been subpoenaed and the materials being subpoenaed are likely to maintain relevant information. Rather, the board's rules require a showing that a person or materials are relevant. Here, no such showing is made. Uh, and I refer the board to Rule 3D where it says, and a statement describing, what is required is a statement describing that the subpoenaed persons and/or materials are relevant to the proceedings. Not likely, as alleged in the subpoena request, but they are relevant. In other words, requiring that there be some due diligence performed after a reasonable inquiry and some affirmation as to the issue of residency, which none is made. The proposed subpoenas are no more than a fishing expedition unsupported by facts and not based on a reasonable inquiry. Allowing subpoenas to be issued under the circumstances would allow an objector, such as is attempted to be done here, to file an unverified objector's petition without conducting due, due inquiry and use the powers of the board through the election process to go on a fishing expedition. This is recognized by Illinois courts as, as being unacceptable. And as People v. Cannon is cited in the brief quoting to People v., or I'm sorry, United States versus Nixon. Again, the use of the subpoena powers isn't to try and secure information if, if it exists, maybe it'll be there, maybe it'll help me. It's to secure relevant information by this board's own rules that is in the hands or the possession of a third party. So in other words, it's not a shoot first and ask questions later standard. It's use the subpoena powers to secure the attendance of witnesses in four circumstances. Requires, it requires a showing that materials sought are evidentiary and relevant. The material is not otherwise reasonably procurable by the exercise of due diligence in advance of trial or hearing. That the requesting party cannot properly prepare for trial without such production. And the failure to maintain materials might lead to unreasonable delay of the hearing or trial. And number four, the application is made in good faith and not intended as a general fishing expedition. You heard from counsel, she, she stated that these are these subpoena, parties to which the subpoena is requested, they may contain information as to relevant, uh, residency. Not that they do. It's, it's not enough to allege that there might be relevant information. The standard is that there's an assertion that there is relevant information. It's not otherwise available and I need the power of this board to bring the documents in, into the, uh, the hearing process. So for those reasons, I believe that the motion for the issuance of subpoenas should be denied given that the objector has failed to set forth a sufficient basis required by this board's very Rule 3D and a showing that the materials are relevant to the proceedings. That assertion was not made. The request for subpoena should be denied.
And if, if I may, in, in reply, the board rules were certainly adopted after the drafting of the objector's petition. Nonetheless, as shown clearly in the, the response to the candidate's, I'm sorry, the, the response to the candidate's objection to the objector's petition or to the subpoenas requested by the candidate, there was an investigation done. There was due diligence done. The objection wasn't filed until, I believe, um, if my dates are correct, I'll just double check. Okay, the objection, I believe, was filed either December 1st or December 2nd. I want to say December 2nd. And on November 26th, 2020, a screenshot was taken of the Recorder of Deeds online search to show that in fact Gale and Houston Towers purchased the property at 15241 Norton. Then, again, on November 29th, 2020, the, at the property tax portal for Cook County was reviewed. And it was determined that Gale Towers, or I'm sorry, Houston Towers, he was the owner of the property, who was also married to Gale Towers, was accepting a homeowner's exemption at 15241 Norton Drive. In addition, there was another, there was a FOIA response that was, for a FOIA that was submitted on November 30th, 2020, that was not received until December 14th. However, that FOIA clearly states that there was inspection that was done on December 4th, 2020, as well as a request for a permit for the property on Norton in South Holland. All of this and the other exhibits attached to our response to candidate's motion to deny the subpoenas or objection to the subpoenas, all of that shows that reasonable inquiry was performed. Due diligence, in fact, was performed. I submit that this is actually more due diligence than most objectors do when they file. In addition to that, while the statements in the objector's, um, request for subpoenas, as well as subpoenas themselves, may say may or likely, the reason is because, number one, there may be more than one Gale Towers. We're trying to give them as much information as possible to, to hone in on the individual that we believe has not established residency in the, in the Village of Dalton, instead is a resident of the Village of South Holland. We don't know what the water usage bills are going to show because those documents are not always subject to FOIA. We did FOIA some of those and we received some back for this Village of South Holland to show that there is water usage going on at the Village of South Holland. We cannot know what a Nycor bill or a People's Gas bill or a ComEd bill is going to show without FOIing those. Those are not public, I'm sorry, without subpoenaing those. Those are not public agencies. No matter how many FOIAs we file with them, they do not have to respond to our FOIAs. So the only manner in which we can find the discoverable information, which we believe would lead to admissible information to show that the candidate, in fact, based upon the reasonable inquiry and due diligence that has already been performed, that the candidate, in fact, does not reside in Dalton. She actually is a resident of the Village of South Holland at the property on Norton. And in addition to that, the, um, you know, the, the statements regarding the ability to own property and own multiple pieces of property. Yes, that's true. You can, somebody can own 30 pieces of property. I mean, we obviously have big time real estate investors that own multiple pieces of property. However, you can only collect a homestead exemption for one parcel of property. Mr. Mr. Houston Towers and Ms. Gale Towers are currently collecting a homeowner's exemption for the property and Norton in the Village of South Holland. As, as recent as December 4th, 2020, an inspection was done. And on that document from the Village of South Holland, it stated that the property owners were Gale and Houston Towers. The request for a permit was filed on January 20, I'm sorry, on November 26th, 2020. And again, that request for a permit detailed Gale Towers as the owner. If they're separated, that happened really quickly because they were obviously just a couple of weeks ago trying to get this roof done at the property in South Holland, the property of which they likely reside at because that's where they collect the homeowner's exemption. As such, these subpoenas are completely relevant. They are in line with the, with the provisions required under Section 3D. They were filed in compliance with Section 3D of the board's just recently adopted rules. And they also comply, and I believe that based on candidate's 3M motion, which is the request for us to give a preliminary showing, their preliminary showing has been made. There are six documents attached to the, to the response that clearly show that there was a preliminary investigation and due diligence done. And as such, we ask that the subpoenas issue.
I could briefly, uh, state, counsel's indicated that the records, the subpoenas are appropriate and the, the invocation of the civil standard of, of the circuit court is used and that she's, and that it's asserted that it would likely lead to relevant information or likely lead to admissible information. That's not the standard imposed by Rule 3D. Again, I'm going to quote, and the statement, at the time of the request for the issuance of subpoenas, it states that the, the party requesting is to include a, and quote, "statement describing why the subpoenaed person and/or materials are relevant to the proceedings." Not likely to lead to relevant information as is done in discovery in civil proceedings. We're not governed by the Code of Civil Procedure. We're governed by this board's rules. And this board's rules doesn't allow for the use of subpoenas for the possibility that they might result in the disclosure of, of admissible information. It's a very limited nature of subpoena that can be sought. And that is, uh, where, where the party is aware, after reasonable inquiry, knowing that the information is in the hands of a third party, but they need the assistance of this board's power to, to capture the document and make the document be compelled for production or make the person be compelled for production. We're not held to the standard of likely to lead to, to relevant information. It has to be relevant and known to be relevant in the first instance.
If I may, just briefly in, in response to that, that specific issue, the, the request for subpoena states, our request for subpoena states that all entities, agencies, companies and persons maintain or likely maintain relevant information related to the candidate's residency. The, the qualifier of maintain or likely maintain is, is simply a qualifier. We first started off with maintain. They maintain this information. Electric, if electric is at the property, then there should be an electric bill from ComEd. If there's gas at the property, there should. Then there should be an electric bill from ComEd. If there's gas at the property, there should be a gas bill. From people's gas or Nycor. If water is running through the property, there should be a water bill. All these things are things that are common as it relates to property ownership. So to state that they are maintained or likely maintained. It, it's to just focus on the likely is, is totally ignoring the rest of the words in the motion.
Um, this, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, as, as the movement, movement, I won't belabor the points. Um, I've, I've said what I needed, what I believe I needed to say.
Okay, um. You know, Attorney Jaworski. You mentioned the fact that you. Um, had substantial evidence from the village of South Ha- Holland. In regards to residency of the, of the, um. The candidate here. Um, if that, if that information. That you've gathered is so. Um. Overwhelming, I, I would say, uh, from your testimony that. You would think that it's. Sustaining or substantial. Um, why do we need and or why do you think any further information? From the subpoena process would be beneficial?
Okay, so first I just want to correct the record. I'm not testifying, I'm arguing. So just want to make sure that the record's clear. I am not. Under oath, I'm just simply arguing. That said, I, I still do think that it's, it's substantial information and. Typically through a subpoena, it's not just the gathering of information. It's the gathering of information that's been gathered pursuant to subpoena. So as to make it admissible. If candidate's attorney is willing to stipulate. To the admissibility of the documents that. I received via FOIA from South Holland, that would certainly make things. A lot easier, but I don't know that candidate's attorney is willing to stipulate to that and. You know, and I can understand if he wouldn't be. So that said, because of that. That's why we need a subpoena. And there may be additional documentation that with a subpoena. You gets everything. You don't have the redactions. With a FOIA, you have the redaction. So you can have a water bill with the FOIA and potentially have the name or the address redacted. So there's limited information that we can get on a FOIA. We could basically. You know, we, we could get on in, into the car in a FOIA, but we can't start the car because we don't have the key.
Um, and you think you'll be able to start the car with the subpoena?
I think the subpoena will give us unredacted information and, you know, potentially fill in holes that. That may be missing because we are not privy to that information. As it relates to, uh, the Freedom of Information Act.
You know, when you, when you talk about, now you're talking about. Um, the appearance of that candidate's name on a deed. And or an inspection report. But. With the signature alone and with the. The filing of a deed or a deed in the, the name of the. Recipient, if you will, in, in this case, you're saying the, the candidate. That doesn't prove occupancy. And, um, and what you're, it seems like what you're arguing here now is occupancy. For, um.
I'm arguing residency.
Okay, and residency, uh, has the, it, residency also has to mean occupancy. If you will.
So residency is, is, is a tricky little beast.
Exactly.
And I think those election practitioners recognize that. Um, you know, the Maxim case, you know, did, did provide some, a little bit more information on residency. But it's basically physical presence and, and, and an intent to remain. And then there's a question of whether residency has been abandoned. In this situation. We don't believe that there's even physical presence. Or an intent to remain. Uh, since two thousand sixteen, the candidate has owned this property in. In South Holland. From two thousand sixteen on forward, the candidate and her husband have collected a homeowner's exemption. And as recent as November twenty twenty and December twenty twenty, there were inspections and a new roof. Put on the property in South Holland. So that, you know, those same facts don't exist. For the property in Dalton. And everything that, you know, everything that we presented showed that there is, there, this property in South Holland is owned. By Gale and Houston Towers. A homeowner's exemption has been collected. And work is being done on the property as if somebody is residing there. There's water bills that show that somebody is residing there, consuming water. So, you know, the more information that we could certainly get from the village of South Holland as well as any other. You know, any of the other additional persons that we had listed in our request for subpoena. Now the. I guess the more information the board will have before it to make a decision as to whether. Gale Towers, who both you are, you know, two of the board members are extremely familiar with. Um, whether Gale Towers in fact lives in South Holland or if she lives in Dalton and whether she has residency. In South Holland or whether she has residency in Dalton.
Hypothetical, hypothetically. If, with the board. Today in front of the board in regards to getting a subpoena. Uh, what's your next move?
I'm sorry, I, there was a little bit of a breaking up there. Could you state that again?
Hypothetically, if the board, if you're unsuccessful. If you. Are unsuccessful or if this board is unsuccessful, uh, granting you the subpoena, uh. Power. Uh, what's your next move at that point?
Well, I assume, I mean, obviously I would make my record that I think that the board's decision is correct, is, is incorrect. I would reserve that issue on appeal. And, you know, maybe I would consider the possibility of going up on an interlocutory basis to force those subpoenas to be issued. I may have to go to circuit court to get my subpoena request. Um, heard. And see if the circuit court would force the electoral board to issue said subpoenas. If that was unsuccessful, then we would have to. Um, obviously I would be contending, I assume with candidate's, uh, forthcoming. Motion to strike and dismiss the objectors petition. So we would be traveling on a parallel path of that and. I would potentially be stuck. At this time, depending on what the circuit court says with the evidence that I have already submitted, which I do believe is substantial. I believe the evidence submitted shows to. Any normal unbiased person that, that in South, that. The candidate in fact lives in South Holland and resides in South Holland and does not maintain a residency. In the village of Dalton. In fact, it's actually her sister or somebody else who's. Got a homeowner's exemption. Maybe they own the property in, in Dalton and maybe they've rented it out to. Houston's sister, Jerees Towers. I'm not sure. But until that is all borne out, the facts that you have in front of you are that. The property in Dalton is not owned by. Gale Towers. The property in South Holland is owned by Gale Towers. Both properties have homeowner's exemptions being collected on them. The property in South Holland has had work done on it. As recently as three weeks ago. Where the. Person signing off for the work or requesting the work is Gale Towers. And listed herself as her and her husband as the owner of the property. So I may think the evidence that we have already is, is pretty substantial. And I think, you know, denying a, a request for a subpoena. Is essentially denying my, my, my client the due process that they should be afforded.
Can I ask why on the majority of the subpoenas you're seeking information for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen as well as twenty twenty? When the residency requirement is a year before the election? So I guess the question is how is twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen? Uh, going to lead you to relevant info, uh, why, why twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen?
Just wanted to see if there's any historical information in some of those documents that would. Shed some light on whether the candidate in fact was a resident. So for instance. If the candidate. You know, put the, put the property in a trust and we weren't aware of that because that was in a twenty eighteen document and we only asked for it from. Twenty nineteen or twenty twenty forward. Then. That would be to, you know, yield relevant information. I would have no problem with, uh, limiting the scope of the subpoena. To one year, you know, to the, I guess, year twenty twenty. And twenty nineteen, I mean, I prefer twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, but if. If candidate's counsel will agree that the subpoenas could issue. Um, and we could limit the scope as it relates to the year, I would be agreeable to that.
That does address one of my concerns in terms of the scope of the subpoena, but I, I keep coming back. To the fact that this board's rules. Require. That the materials are relevant to the proceedings and the proceeding answer. When we were asked why the, the, the time duration, the response was, well, we, we just wanted to see. That's the very, the, the very thing in United States versus Nixon. It's, it's, it's a fishing expedition. I, I can't, I can't. Can't make it any clearer than that. We, I don't know what records are there. But they might be there. That's the difference in the, in, in the civil proceeding, which allows for the discovery. Of information likely to lead to the admissible, to the discovery of admissible information. That's the standard in the civil courts, not the standard before the, the board. Based on the rules that have been adopted. I'm simply seeking compliance with the board's rules.
And if I may, in, in response to that, I. The, the, the request as it relates going back to twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Is again to understand the background. It's not to say, well, we may find something. I mean, even, even if we found something that had a twenty eighteen date that said that she lived someplace else. That doesn't per se help our case, but it gives us the background so that we can understand the full context. Of. Where the candidate actually resides. But again, I am fine. With limiting the scope of the subpoena. To January first, twenty twenty through. The present. If that will. Please the board. But I do think that we have shown a substantial showing. Of potential, of relevant information. To show that these subpoenas are based in law. And compliant with section three D.
Um, on behalf of the candidate, without waiving compliance with the rules. To the extent that the board were so inclined, and again, I'm going to stand on the rules. But to the extent the board would be so inclined to issue, to, to compel the, the issuance of subpoenas. Which again, I'm, I'm not. I'm not waiving my objection. I, I stand on the fact that this is discovered, um. Beyond the scope of the board's rules. Um, you know, for, for example, tax returns, even for a given year. The relevance of tax returns to this objection. I, 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 other than an address that might be on a form and an address is far from a residence. That's an example of what I believe to be the fishing expedition.
I'd be happy to actually just, I just want the address. If, I mean, you could redact everything else in there. Do the front page. I just want the address.
I'm not sure what the significance of the address would be.
Well, where somebody is filing their taxes is usually where they live. I mean, I don't file my taxes from my office. I file my taxes from my home. I list my home on my taxes. I list my, you know, where I'm collecting a homeowner's exemption on my taxes.
You know that the, uh, on a tax return, a post office box is acceptable also.
Sure, I would want any information on the tax return that actually has anything related to. The properties. So, I mean, everything else could be redacted. I don't care about the candidate's financials. In fact, I don't even want to know that. I certainly don't want her social security number. I just want to know what properties she is claiming a homeowner's exemption for.
That's, that's available on the assessor's website.
And the address.
If she's the one claiming that, that assertion has been made, she claims. That hasn't been established that she has claimed a homestead exemption.
I said they, I said they.
There's, there's.
As, as joint owners of the property, because they still are, they are, they are owners.
It's a significant point.
Sure, but they are joint owners of the property. He may be the one that has. Filed for the exemption, but under, under the, the documents as per the Cook County, well, no longer the Cook County Recorder of Deeds, now the. County clerk recording department. Uh, according to the documents on there. They, they are still joint owners of that property.
Okay, um. The. I mean, no further, no further, uh, arguing on this. Uh, I would like for us to make a motion to. To vote on. On the matter.
I got, um, some questions. Um, is it a discussion for the board members yet, mayor?
Go ahead, even.
Okay, well, first I was a little confused because I was trying to understand, was you the attorney mayor or was it? Uh, Dennis was the attorney for the other person. So you was going more argument than he was, so.
As, as a board chairperson, as a board member, I'm, I'm, uh. Um. I'm entitled. To ask questions of. Of the attorneys in or the presentation to the board. Just like you want to make comment right now.
Yeah, it's a comment, but not an argument, but yeah. So, um, first I can understand, um. When it was first, uh, opened up and you allow for Tiffany Nelson to basically give her argument. Um, you argued right after. So that's why I was pointing out that you guys will be biased. Because you didn't allow Dennis, um, Jenny Oples to go next as you did. Previous with other attorneys. Let me, it's the first attorney, then the second attorney, but you did the, the debating first. So that's one reason why I keep saying y'all gonna be biasing this. Uh, secondly, um, attorney Tiffany Nelson, I wanted you to know, I didn't understand what was the reason for the mayor asking you what would be your defense? If you're not successful, I didn't understand why he needed to know your next move before he made his decision here. Um, just a rule of the wise, I would never give anybody my hand or show my hand. Before, um, they tell me what they're gonna do, then I show them what I would do. So I think that's how you should handle it, even though you gave us what you're gonna do and that's fine. So I guess that's gonna help him with his decision because he, he would know your next move. So, um. I do like the fact that, uh, everyone is talking and discussing what's going on. Um, I do want to, uh, agree with the subpoenas and moving forward. I do think we need more clarity as to where she, um, stays. Because if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, any attorney, either attorney can correct me. Um, is that an apartment building? Cause I, I don't know. Is that apartment building that she stays in for Dalton? And then is that a house that's over in South Holland? Because if it is. A, I don't understand who will be staying in an apartment and then doing a ton of work on a house in South Holland. So I'm, I'm confused with that. Is that apartment or is it a house for Dalton address? Do any one of you guys know?
Okay, I believe it's an apartment.
I'm, I'm not aware.
Okay, well, that's my concern because, um, if you pull apartments and you pull all the things that you're stating. I, I too don't agree that someone will put a homeowner's exemption on a property that they're not living in. And I do see that as fraud to the government as a whole if basically, um, Gale Towers did do that. So I would like to see the records as it relates to her dress and I agree. That it don't have anything to do with, we want to know her financial information. Um, I am looking for, um, if she stays here in Dalton because she do sit on the park board. And if that's the case, that wouldn't be good for her because she's defrauding the residents as a whole. And she should stay where she governs, which is Dalton. So if she do reside in South Holland, she should go run for office in South Holland. And withdraw from, um, the Dalton board here. So that's my concern as it relates to Gale's Tower. Thank you.
Um. Trustee, apparently you are still confused because I was not arguing. I can make a comment. It is no procedural, um, um. Protocol, if you will, that the second attorney has to answer right behind the, the first attorney. Um, he did in fact speak. I wanted to get clarification from. The, uh, objectors attorney in regards to, uh, movement. And there's nothing wrong with that. And she, and she, um, clarified. Her, her, her procedure, her, her next, uh, um.
Well, well, just to be clear, I just wanted to put on the record what all the various options are. I mean, there's other options that I certainly didn't. You know, give my full hand, but, uh, yeah, I, I, you, you asked a question, so I wanted to let you know what the potential. Avenues are that we could be exploring.
Exactly, and, and she said that she was first confused and. To clear up her confusion or try to clear up her confusion. There's no protocol in regards to when I'm gonna ask you questions of the next movement of the, of the rebuttal from the, the other attorney, so.
Right, I guess, mayor, because my concern is I see you had no questions as it related to Dennis. All your questions was geared towards Tiffany. So that, that shows me, I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out the facts. So that's what I'm sitting back observing. So I didn't see you asking anything as it related to the candidate if we're not gonna be biased. Which I know that's your candidate that you're running. So that's why I'm saying, then ask. Which I know that's your candidate that you're running. So that's why I'm saying, then ask both attorneys whatever their argument is, but you did no such thing. So I am concerned about that. And then as it related to P O box, I was researching on my phone here. A P O box is acceptable only if the post office does not deliver mail to your home. Because you guys were suggesting that it may be a P O box on there, on her tax returns. So that's the only way it's acceptable. But I, I do doubt that she used the P O box. I hope she used one of her many addresses on her tax returns. So that's why I do agree with the subpoenas. Subpoenas basically to approve that you're innocent, so you get gathered the facts. I don't believe it's a fishing expert. I just think that we are trying to get the information so we can move forward.
I'd just like to, if I could make one comment.
Sure.
The reference to proving that you're innocent, I have to take issue with that. Subpoenas aren't used and doesn't place a burden on an individual to prove that they're somehow innocent of an allegation. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, well, my point made or heard. Basically, I just think it clears a person. We was here, once again, I stated before in twenty seventeen as it related to Andrew Holm standing here in town, and he had to provide us with almost similar documentation as she's asking for to prove if he stayed here in the village of Dalton. So I didn't understand what was the issue now with getting the same stuff when she is an elected official, meaning Gail Towers. So she should have all that at her fingertips, honestly.
Why don't we let this record show reflected the, the decision and or the electoral court electoral board appearing and making a decision in two thousand seventeen has no bearing on today's actions. Now, if there's no further comment from anybody, Bill's attorney, did you want to comment on anything? Well, if there's no further comment, why don't
I actually, I, 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 to my comments previously, well, a couple of things. One, there are a number of subpoenas that are being requested. And I don't think that the board needs to motion on the on the request in its entirety, that the board can sort of pick and choose which subpoenas are issues and which ones aren't. And the other thing I would like to say is that I, the subpoenas do ask for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. The residency requirement is that you have to be a resident for one year prior to the election. So I don't know that some of the information that is being requested really meets what the requirements are for the issuance of a subpoena. I, I would take note of Mr. Giannopoulos's argument regarding the electoral board powers and the rules. That rule three D does state that issuing subpoenas requires, requiring attendance of witnesses and subpoenas due to TECOM. However, the request for the issuance of such subpoena shall be made to the electoral board and its attorney in writing and shall identify the person or entity being subpoenaed and any materials requested pursuant to the subpoena, the purpose of the subpoena and a statement describing why the subpoenaed person and/or materials are relevant to the proceedings. So that's the threshold that Mr. Rouski, I'm sorry, I botched her last name. Under our rules, that's the threshold that she has to make. You have a copy of the motion, you have a copy of the rule or her request, you have a copy of the rules. You have a copy of each of the subpoenas and the information that's being requested. And you have a copy of the candidate's objection and the objector's response to that objection. So the question before the board is, I guess, did the, did the objector meet this threshold? And she, you know, did she meet the threshold for all of the subpoenas, only some of them? And then if so, the, the subpoena should be issued. If not, if there isn't a statement describing why the subpoenaed person or materials are relevant to the proceedings, then they shouldn't. And I'd also like to note, and I guess I have a question, because there was a request at the beginning of this hearing to actually add a subpoena that wasn't even included in the motion. So I guess on, on, on that subpoena, because the, the rules do state that the request has to be made in writing.
Yes.
In and of itself doesn't follow the rules.
So if, if I may, if I may request, so basically I made that request based upon the candidate's attorney's assertion that the candidate and her husband may in fact be separated. So that was based upon that. So the board rules do not provide a timeframe in which I need to make my request for subpoenas. So if, if need be, I will file a written request for subpoena and we can go through this whole process again, but for the sake of judicial economy and expectancy, I was making that oral request now based upon candidate's counsel's representations as to the status of Mrs. Towers' relationship with Houston Towers.
To, to be clear, I never made a representation. I threw out the possibility as an example. I'm not familiar at this point, so I'm not able to indicate the marital status. I use that, I believe, in the nature of an example of how you could have parties living at separate addresses, not being jointly living together, claiming the homestead exemption. So I just want that point to be clear.
Okay, so then, then just, just to clarify on my end, I will be happy to file a written request for subpoena if that is what the board wishes. And we can obviously go through this exercise again as it relates to the subpoena for Mr. Towers. Or the board can hear my oral request and it's up to the board. I mean, I, I, you know, I made the motion based upon what I had heard.
Okay. And that's why I do suggest as the board votes on the motion, that it, it votes, I think, subpoena by subpoena. I know that that is time consuming. However, because we have an oral, an oral request for a subpoena and then you have a number of subpoenas, some are requesting documents going all the way back to twenty eighteen, some are requesting documents. You have the, a request for the Department of Vital Records asking for marriage licenses. And then you have requests seeking documents for South Holland or the village of Dalton on, et cetera. But that those are, in my mind, the, the questions that the board needs to be asking themselves as it relates to these subpoenas as to, and that is whether or not the these, the objector has, has met this threshold for these requests. And then I guess the other question is, you know, the, the scope of the subpoena, you know, as we discussed previously, related to asking for information going beyond what going all the way back to twenty eighteen.
And, and just to, just to clarify, as stated, I mean, I can make, if the board is agreeable to, I will be happy to amend my subpoena request to be from January first, twenty twenty forward. That gives us the one year and a couple of months, or even if I have to go April first, twenty twenty forward, I'd be happy to make that amendment.
So does the board have the list of the, I am, that's, I guess, the other question. The, the list of the requests for the subpoenas is in the objector's motion? If you want to reference what all is being requested.
I have a concern regarding the distinction that was made earlier between ownership and residency. And I understand why this subpoena subpoenas requested are relevant to ownership, or may, it may be relevant, let me say that. But I don't see how they are going to establish who resides in the property. Water usage, comm ed bills. Okay, there are utility usages at the property. That doesn't tell us who. From what I've heard, I think that applies to all the subpoenas that are requested. And I, in any event, so I'm, I'm inclined to deny the motion.
Mr. Rouski, would you like to respond?
Yes, I would. Actually, I wasn't sure if the board was going to allow a response at this time.
Would the board allow a response?
Okay, thank you. Well, the documents sought are sought to determine residency. I've already conceded that I understand that ownership and residency are two different things. And yes, it may not show exactly who is living there, but it may. Here's the thing, when, when, when people, when people open a comm ed account, they put their name on it. So if Gail Towers has a comm ed account sitting at the address on Norton and does not have one at the address in Dalton, the presumption is pretty strong that she's actually living on Norton in South Holland rather than in the village of Dalton. Same thing with the gas bill, same thing with the water bill. So all these utilities, we can't even tell right now whose name they're in because that information is not subject to the Freedom of Information Act. We may be able to tell as it relates to the water, but sometimes that information then gets redacted when people respond to FOIAs. So because of that, we can't, we can't tell right now as it is who has, who holds those utility bills, who is the named person on those utility bills. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, sure, ownership and residency are two different things, but I think we've pretty, we have established some pretty strong evidence that shows that there is a homeowner's exemption being accepted at the Norton address. Gail and Houston Towers are both on the deed of that property. Gail, in fact, is filing for permit applications to get work done on that property that they're collecting a homeowner's exemption for. There is no homeowner's exemption being collected by either Gail or Houston at the address in Dalton. So there's nothing to establish that she in fact is a resident of Dalton. Aside from the self-serving affidavit in her statement of candidacy, there is nothing else. And so we have challenged that with, with evidence, some of which is clearly admissible evidence that shows that in fact, there is a question, there is a legitimate question. There's nothing about this that is a fishing expedition. This is a legitimate question about the candidate's residency. And as such, I think that every single one of these subpoenas is designed to elicit admissible evidence related to the candidate's residency. If there is nothing that comes out and we are incorrect, then of course we are incorrect. But somebody's got to have lights and electric and heat at these buildings in Norton or at the one on Dalton or on Van Buren and Dalton. And without being able to subpoena that information, we can't determine who actually holds the bill, who is actually the named party on the bill.
But that again goes to the responsible party, which could be the owner, certain, would be the owner, certainly.
It very well could be, but it usually states the responsible party as being the owner or the occupant. I know that when I've owned property, you know, I've, I, I owned a place that I rented out to, to some people. And when I rented it out, I had an owner's account that showed that I was the owner, but it also showed that it was being rented out to somebody. So there's ways that you can code these accounts and that comm ed, Nycor and People's Gas code these accounts to reflect that there is a tenant living in the, in the facility and the bill is under the tenant's name. In fact, some municipalities, the village of Dalton and the village of South Island may even have ordinances stating that the water bill is the responsibility only of the, only of the owner of the property. Or they may have an ordinance saying that there's a joint responsibility as to the water bill. Or they may have an ordinance that states that it is the tenant of the property that is responsible for the water bill. So of course, that would be, you know, part of our investigation determining who holds the responsibility for payment of the water bill. The occupant, the owner, or both. So that certainly is part of our investigation, but this is a preliminary stage. And I think that the board is trying to make finding, or trying to make a determination as to the validity of the residency objection at this moment, which I think is unfair, because we are here asking for subpoenas to determine and to further prove the allegations we have already submitted. To stop us at this point from getting the subpoenas that we believe that we are lawfully entitled to is stopping the investigation, is stopping the objection, is stopping everything before our, before my client has been given her due process. That bolstered with the fact that we have two board members who we believe do have a bias, who have not recused themselves or disqualified themselves. You know, that, all those things together do not look good.
Is not relevant or irrelevant. It still comes down to the, in my view, the information you are requesting goes to ownership. It will not yield residency determination. Who's, it could, there could very well be a scenario, and I don't know if this, it all applies hypothetically, where you will find a candidate's not on anything at all as far as utility bills go. That does not mean the candidate is not living at that address. So I'm concerned about the relevancy of determining who's on a bill. Period.
And, and just in, in response to that, I think that that, that case is very different from the fact pattern that you just stated, where somebody has nothing, no, you know, they don't have their name on anything. That's very different from somebody who has their name on legal documents in a neighboring municipality, showing that they are in fact owners and likely occupants of that property. I think that that's the distinguishing factor here. Is that we do have evidence already showing this property in a neighboring community. I believe that where the property is located, you could probably throw a stone and throw it into Dalton, but it's not in Dalton. And that's the relevant inquiry.
And by being a single family resident, I do see a person putting their name on it. I don't see a landlord placing their name on any account that they're renting. So that's the reason why I'm saying yes for the subpoenas, that you will find out who stays where. Because I have several rental properties and I never, ever put my name on their bills. When I rent it out, it's the tenant's responsibility to pay their light, their gas, and then like you just stated, in some municipalities, their water bills. Here in the village of Dalton, we do have an ordinance which I did initiate when we first got in office to have the water bill go in the tenant's name. So therefore you have no issues or if somebody get a shut off notice, it go directly to the tenant. So I agree with you on getting the information because I think that will help or show if the person resides there.
Attorney Jaworski, you've mentioned judicial economy several times during our hearing here. And certainly if we were to move forward with the subpoena process, then that would not account for any judicial economy. I, I can.
I don't, I, I don't agree with that statement. I think if the subpoenas were issued.
Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were turning it over to me. I, I apologize.
Never interrupts. Because of that, that process, and I know the process, and I know the process of the subpoena. I know the process of the serving of the subpoena. I know the process of the acceptance of the subpoena. And in some cases, a lengthy process. In a lot of cases, most cases, it's a lengthy process. Now, when you refer to judicial economy, I'm not sure how that relates to the subpoena process if we were to vote for the subpoena process. Because it's the, the process of getting the subpoena, ordering the subpoena, getting it processed, the process of delivery and serving that subpoena and, and, and which would in fact take, take us probably well past the holidays. And, and when you say you have, right now, you have a substantial amount of evidence that, that you can move forward with, I'm not sure what benefit the subpoena would, would actually give to you. Talking about tax returns, you're talking about occupancy, residency. That wouldn't in fact improve residency. I mean, even if in fact that, that candidate was served at that house, does not in fact mean that they reside there. It's the nut last known location. That that person may have reside, may have occupy and/or may have been seen at even. So help me if you will, how does this minimize the judicial? So help me, if you will, how does this minimize the judicial economy?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As it relates to judicial, to judicial economy, judicial economy doesn't mean that, you know, my client doesn't get their due process rights and get their, the ability to still prove and put forth admissible evidence in their case. When I was referring to judicial economy, I was talking about, obviously, consolidating these cases in any manner possible and consolidating the arguments between this case and similar cases so that we are not all sitting here going through the exact same arguments over and over again. These election cases are extremely fast-paced cases. They move at a lightning speed. Dennis, I think, will agree with me on this, that if we hear an election attorney or somebody coming in asking for a 30-day briefing schedule, we know that they've probably never done an election case in their life. So we understand, I understand, that these cases move at a lightning-fast speed, which is the reason why I submitted the request for the subpoenas the day after the initial hearing. There was an objection submitted, and this is obviously the first time, a little less than a week after the first hearing, that we are able to actually hear, that you guys are actually able to hear the arguments related to the request for subpoenas and the objection to see. So while I do, of course, always want judicial economy, I also need to be able to represent my client to the fullest and press forward and make sure that I am getting everything that I believe that my client is entitled to under the rules and under the law. And I think under the rules and under the law, my client is entitled to prove the objection that they've made. We've already presented six pieces of evidence that we believe help establish that the candidate, in fact, is not a resident of the Village of Dalton and instead is a resident of the Village of South Holland. These additional subpoenas and these requests for additional information are so that we can get information that does not need to be presented via a witness. It can be a document that is accepted into evidence because it was received pursuant to subpoena. We would also then get documents that are not redacted. We all know, you know, that that when somebody files a FOIA, there's a lot of stuff that tends to get redacted, sometimes rightfully and sometimes not rightfully. So this gives us access to the unredacted documents. And as stated previously, the utilities, those utilities, with the exception of the water, those utilities are not subject to the Freedom of Information Act. And while it might not give us all the information that we need, when you look at a case like residency, you don't look at one piece of the puzzle. You have to look at the puzzle as a whole. And you have to make a determination, you as the electoral board, looking at the puzzle as a whole. Does this person, in fact, live and reside legally where they say that they did on their nominating petitions? And I should have a right to prove my objection. I have submitted, I have made the minimal showing. I have made the substantial showing. Six pieces of evidence already presented already show that the candidate, in fact, does own the property in South Holland. There is a homeowner's exemption on their property. Ms. Towers herself had requested permits for that property. Inspections were done. She's listed as the owner. All of these things lead to the inference that she likely is a resident there. She likely has residence there. And as such, our objection is in good faith. She, it's our submission that she, in fact, does have residence there, and it's not just likely that she does have residence there and not in the Village of Dalton. We should be allowed to prove our case.
If I may address the board. Perhaps, perhaps for consideration, Rule 3F contains a provision where the board has authority to direct the parties to appear and confer for the settlement or simplification of issues and otherwise conducting a pre-hearing conference. Might it not be beneficial, given counsel's willingness to reduce the scope of the subpoenas from three years down to one, which was one of my objections, although not asserted, and and given the fact that there's been an indication of a concession on the federal tax issues, might, might, it might not be a good idea to give the parties an opportunity to see if they can reach some sort of a resolution with respect to the subpoenas and and report to the board's counsel with the results of those efforts. I may be able to, after giving an opportunity to review the subpoenas one at a time, I, notwithstanding the fact that I continue to rely on Rule 3D, but perhaps an agreement could be reached, particularly public information documents. I I think that would be able to reach some sort of an agreement on on the subpoenas. Just a thought, where we've been delaboring this for a while, so I'm just trying to push a potential resolution forward.
I'd be agreeable to that.
And when, would you, well, want to like the, want to have this pre-conference? Before we take the vote on this?
Well, I've got a brief due in an hour and a half. I've got five briefs due in an hour and a half, so I'd really like to cut this off soon.
I think, I think the thought would be that the parties deliberate. They send me an email with their agreement, if any is reached. If, I guess, if one is reached, I would, I, huh. I guess the question would be whether or not the the board would then, I think, still have to vote on that agreement, correct? So then we would just set this for a, a, for, set this for a short date for, for, to reconvene on the subpoena issue.
That's fine. I know, I know that tomorrow, we're, we're booked all day, right?
Yeah, so we would come back on Wednesday, just for, just for a vote, either way. Either a vote on the party's agreement or a vote on the motion for subpoenas. It shouldn't take too long. And then that would be that. But it would, it sounds like the, it sounds like the parties have an idea of what subpoenas they might be able to say okay to. And if the parties say, okay, we're in agreement with the subpoenas, then I would, I would assume that the board would also be in agreement, though I can't, I can't say for sure. So I think it does make some sense for the parties to have this discussion and maybe come back to us with a proposal on December 23rd. With that, or, well, send me a proposal by some, by close of business tomorrow, and then we can have it up for a vote on December 23rd. Does the board agree with that timeline?
Is that in agreeance with the, the attorney?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Okay.
What, I missed it a little bit. I'm just trying to make sure I got it. So they just gonna turn something in to the board, December 23rd? Is that what I heard? Or no?
Oh, I said, close of business on December 22nd, so that way I have an opportunity to disseminate whatever their agreement is to the board for your review. And then assuming they come to an agreement, you guys would either, you would vote to approve the subpoenas they agree on on December 23rd. If there is no agreement, then there would be the vote that I think everybody was intending on having today, which is a vote on the entirety of the objector's request for subpoenas.
Okay, what time is this? So do we have to do another Zoom on the 23rd?
Yep, we're doing another Zoom on the 23rd.
What, what time is that? Because I have.
Zoom on the 23rd.
Nine o'clock in the morning would be great, because I don't know what everybody's schedule is. My schedule kind of tight on that day. So I thought we weren't doing anything else this week.
I do apologize. I know everybody wants to get into the, the holiday, holiday spirit, but we have to take care of this first.
I'm fine with that, long as it's in the morning. I can't do nothing after 11:00, so that's why I'm asking for.
When would people be available to Zoom on the 23rd?
I'm available anytime.
Don't we have a hearing on the 23rd?
We have a hearing on the 22nd.
Correct. 23rd.
We've got nothing on the 23rd.
Well, the morning wouldn't work for me.
Trustee Henyard, you said, do you have any availability in the afternoon?
I do not. I have a whole event scheduled. He knows that. That's why he doing it. I got a whole food giveaway scheduled to feed 5,000 people, so I will not be available. So if you want to make it in the morning, I will make myself available, but I have to be on site, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If, to the board attorney, maybe, and I, and Mr. Genopoulos, I'm sure, he'll, he'll obviously speak whether he's okay with it or not. I would be okay with, done, you know, Mr. Genopoulos and I conferring, giving you by the close of business tomorrow what our, what our opinion is, or what, you know, what our stipulation is. And then you, as the board attorney, individually speaking with each board member and determining if anybody has an objection to that. If there is no objection, then the next time this board meets, they can just confirm that the subpoenas were issued as agreed to by the parties and put the stipulation on the record. If there is an objection by any one of the three, then obviously we'll have to find some time. I hate to do this, maybe on the 24th or over the weekend to hear this. I don't think anybody wants to do that, so.
I would almost, I would rather have the, I think it would be better if the board were to vote on, on the record, so that way the subpoenas can get issued, and I hate to do this. Anybody want to have an electoral board hearing on Christmas Eve in the morning? Does that work?
That's fine.
Parties?
Wouldn't be my first one on Christmas Eve.
Then we can all wear our festive holiday, our holiday gear.
Well, I would suggest, I would suggest, based upon the comments that was made by the clerk, based upon the comments that was made by myself, I think there's some indication in the direction of whether or not the subpoenas are going to be voted on to be issued. But there's a conflict with trustee Henyard's date on the 23rd. I'm not available in the morning of 23rd, nor am I available at all on Christmas Eve. So I, I was, I would suggest that we, we put up a vote right now.
That, I think, was our intention, Mayor, but if the attorneys believe that they can reach a compromise that is satisfactory to both sides, I'm not going to stand in the way of that.
Okay, well, if, if, if that's the case, then we need to come up. Can we do it briefly on the 22nd? Since we have a hearing on the 22nd?
Would the parties be able to confer before tomorrow?
I can, yeah, I can confer anytime after 5:00 PM today. I just got to get all those other briefs on file.
I'm certainly, counsel and myself can, can get together as soon as she's done with her matters pending and address this in the early evening tonight over the phone.
Then do we want to set this for a vote on the subpoenas for tomorrow? I know our last, our last hearing is at 2:30. I can put this on the, on the calendar for 3:00, though I don't think we'll get to it at 3:00. We probably will get to it whenever 2:30 ends.
A first hearing, a first hearing is, 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 is what? Can we, can we, can we put it in for 11:30? And it's either, either yes or no, basically.
It's fine. I, I'm okay with that.
Um, I'll have to, Ms. Court Reporter? Is that okay? That's okay. All right, so we'll start tomorrow at 11:30. I'll ask Giovanni to amend the Zoom time for hearing on subpoenas. So then you would be able to get me some sort of stipulation. By, so that means.
If I may, hopefully, we could, if we can't get to the stipulation in writing, I think Mr. Genopoulos and I can work out a stipulation to at least state on the record.
All right.
I agree.
Um, does that work for the board members?
That work for you, Madam.
Yes.
Yes. That works for you, trustee Henyard?
Yes.
Okay, now I know that, Attorney Tiffany, I know you have stuff to get to, but we assume that there are going to be motions to strike and or dismiss, correct?
Yes.
On this case, Attorney Genopoulos. Do we want to set the same schedule that was adopted in the Higgins case?
That would be fine.
Okay, so it's, preliminary motions are due December 23rd at 5:00 PM. Responses due Monday, December 28th at 10:00 AM. Hearing such arguments on December 29th at 2:00 PM. And we would need a motion to adopt that briefing schedule.
That, is that okay for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, I spent, I think, trustee Henyard motioned it. I'll second it.
No, Mayor, that was me.
That was you, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll second it, and let's take the roll call.
On the motion to approve the briefing schedule, Chairman Rogers. Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Henyard?
Aye. And then just for, so that we have it on the record, can we have a motion to, I guess, table discussion on the motion for subpoenas?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? I'm really sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Is there any way that we can push this to noon tomorrow rather than 11:30?
Can you guys do noon tomorrow?
I, I'm available.
We have something else earlier, and we need to push it a half hour. Sorry.
Okay.
I, I, I think, I think noon would work. I, I think the, the matter will be addressed immediately. So we won't interfere with our 12:30. Both councils, what do you think?
I believe so. I believe that we, let's hope we'll work in good faith and get it resolved.
Yes, okay.
All right, then, could I get a motion then to table discussions on the subpoena, and the motion for subpoena until noon on December 22nd?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Henyard?
Aye.
And then finally, are there any other issues, concerns that we need to discuss today? Any other matters?
None that I can think of.
Um, then to close out the meeting, we just need a motion for recess of the board until tomorrow, December 22nd at noon.
Like you made, to recess the hearing until tomorrow, 12 o'clock, no?
Second.
Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Henyard?
Aye.
Motion carried, three ayes. So you're ready tomorrow.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.